Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. We got a full house. We are going to start with roll call. It is for, this is actually a special meeting. It's not one of our regular city council meetings for April 10th. Roll call, please. Mayor Didball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Buckland?
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza?
Here.
And Councilmember Cleveland?
Here.
Thank you. And we will start with the invocation led by Councilmember Buckland and the Pledge of Allegiance if Councilmember Cardoza can lead us tonight.
If you'll bow your heads as I pray. Almighty Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all those that are gathered here tonight. We're truly blessed by your presence. We ask for your guidance and a clear vision so the efforts of staff and council and our community will be of benefit to all of us and to our community. It's in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
Luke, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have several presentations and proclamations tonight. So tonight, we're going to start with the introduction of our new Uba City CHP Captain, Rodney Elson. You're back on again. Come up to the podium and you can go ahead and give us an introduction, please.
So what are you doing?
Very well.
Can you hear me fine?
There should be a button there.
Should be a mic there.
Is that better?
Much.
Okay. All right. Well, I just started here in this area about two months ago. So I'm excited to be here. I've been learning a lot about this community and all the different things that it has. And so, so far, it's been pretty impressive. There's a lot of care and a lot of togetherness here in this community. And that's something that's pretty special. You don't see that in a lot of places. We're going to show, I'm going to show a quick little video about our department. A lot of people don't know, you know, what does a CHP do? What do we do? We just don't, we do more than just write tickets, although we do like to write tickets. We do more than write tickets. We have lots of roles. Lots of times, we help with the allied agencies, Uba City, Uba Sutter, Sutter and Uba County. Let me show a quick video that we put together that kind of sums up what we're about. It's not very long, and then I'll answer some questions after that. No sound.
I think Rodney probably knows all the words to this.
I don't. But, uh... So, um... I'm also the Special Response Team Commander for our Mobile Field Force, which is the unit that oversees civil unrest and things of those nature. And so, we've been in Sacramento for the last couple of weeks, dealing with some pretty serious issues. I pause it. Yeah, you can close it. It's better with the, with the sound. But we've been dealing with some pretty serious issues. And I think, you know, what it stems from, you know, there are lots of, lots of moving parts with things like that. But one of them, one of the most important things is I don't think, from a law enforcement perspective, you guys understand what our expectations are of you. And sometimes, we don't have a good understanding of what your expectations are from us. You know, we have a relationship with you because we need you to do our job. We need your, your support, your understanding at times. But, you know, that's a two-way street. And so, it gets very tough when, when we are miscommunicating. And that's when you have situations that are ugly for everybody. You know, in this job and this law enforcement profession, as Chief Landon would, can attest to, it's very tough. It's different now than it has been in many, many years. I've been on 23 years. So this is, this is a different time. There's a lot of things you have to understand when you, when you step into this role. So, but again, here in this community, you know, you all seem to have a pretty big stake and people care. And that's, that's, that's good. It's a good turnout here tonight, and I think you guys should be proud of that. But don't stop, you know, wanting to have information from us, you know? Engage with us. Ask us questions. Because I'm a true believer in the more goodwill that you put in there, it's like a deposit in the bank. When something bad happens, then you can withdraw that, that good deposit, and usually things are okay. Do you have any questions for, for me about my department and what our role is? The video, we're not going to play that, but what our role is and what we can do for you? Anything? I am from, I was born in Chico, was there probably just a hot second. And then, I was raised in Sacramento. Went to El Camino High School. Go Eagles. Then I got a football scholarship to the University of Washington where I played football up there and went to college. That was a good experience. Great, Seattle's a great city. And then, I, after I graduated, I joined the Higher Patrol, been on, been on 23 years. And, and I've worked all over the state. I worked in West LA. It was my first station. Then I came to, back to Sacramento, was a recruiter, then got on the governor's detail. And that's where me and Councilmember Harris worked together for a long time, traveled all over the world and having a good time. And then, I promoted to Sergeant, went to Woodland for a little while, back to headquarters. And I, then I spent a long time in our ISU, which is like our task force detective units that we have. I did that for a very, very long time. Then I promoted to Lieutenant, went back to headquarters. Then I went to the academy for a while as a lieutenant, then South SAC as a watch commander, and then back to headquarters. Phew. And then, was a, been a captain for almost three years, and then I transferred out here. When this opportunity came, came about, I, I talked to Councilmember Harris at a conference we had last year. And he said, "Hey, I'm going to retire." I'm like, "Oh, man. I'd be really interested in coming out there." And so, we had a long conversation. And I'm really fortunate that I got to do that because every day, I love coming to work. I love coming up here. It's a great, we have a great office in the community up here. The law enforcement community is fantastic. Everybody works together. And again, just like the community, that's, that's not the case everywhere. It just really isn't. So there's a lot of good things going on in this command and in this city and this region. And I'm fortunate to be here. What was your question? There's another.
Um, questions. I know that the Higher Patrol was the first one to discover that fake and stolen IDs was the best way to steal cars and what gangs have done it. When you said West LA, I know that's where the first CHP operation was and is still going on. I'd like to know, is there any problem with...
Well, that, that goes on everywhere. You know, there's a lot of fraud. It exists everywhere. People are always trying to do those types of things. There's not a profound problem here in regards to that. There's a lot of stolen trailers in this area right now. That's been something that's been put on my radar. And so, we're kind of sourcing that a little bit and trying to find out as much information as we can about that to see, you know, where that's coming from. What we see in communities like this that are, that have a lot of, lot of agriculture, you see a lot of stolen tractors. That's something that in the system is entered as property. And so, it's kind of hard to follow up with that because it doesn't have a VIN number like a car does. And so, it's easy to move that around. And sometimes, with some of the equipment, it's just easy to get in there, manipulate it, and steal it. So, and those pieces of equipment are extremely expensive, very, very expensive. And sometimes, you know, the, it's just difficult for the owners to get their property back. So, that's what you see up here, lots of, lots of things of that nature. But yeah, there's a problem right now with vehicle theft. And right now, it's, trailers are kind of on the uptick, for sure. Any other questions? Go ahead, ma'am.
What area do you cover and how many officers do you have?
I have 41 officers, and we cover the unincorporated area of Sutter and, and Uba County's.
Okay.
Anything else?
Any other council members have questions?
All right.
He did, he did share with us that he's a Dallas fan.
I am. I am. Hopefully, that doesn't create any heartache for anybody. We're all Americans. That's America's team, and we know that.
Okay. Chief wants to say something to that.
I knew you were going to say something.
Did you ever play for national championships here at the University of Washington?
I, I did, yes. I, I was, I was fortunate enough to be on, we went to the Rose Bowl three times when I was there. And one of the years, we won the national championship. So I got to play against, I played against, dating myself, Troy Aikman. Played against Junior Seal, Emmett Smith, although they weren't who they are now. Back then, they weren't Hall of Famers. They were just kids like, kids just like I was. But that was a good time, learned a lot. And I don't, I don't talk about that, that much. My kids don't want to hear it, you know? Or I get over yourself, just, you know? But I coached youth football. I have four kids, a single father, have four kids. Two are grown out of the house, but there are two still in the house, two boys. And they, I have three boys and one, one girl. The oldest is a girl. She's a nurse. Very proud of her, proud of all my kids, as we all are. But I, yeah, I love, I coach youth football. I coach at Folsom, their youth program. My, my boys played at Folsom High School, the older one. Pretty good, huh? They're pretty good. But yeah, I love all kinds of sports. Little league, I coach whatever I can do, try to help in any way I can. And you know, the Higher Patrol, if you ever want to know something about us or have a question, you know, as I said before, our investment in you is something that's important to us. So we're, we always want to engage with you. We have an open door policy. So, you know, pick up the phone, call for anything you want to know, just ask us. We're, we're a statewide organization. There's, there's 11,000 of us. We're a big agency. We have 130 offices statewide, lots of resources. And again, we're here to help in any way that we can, so.
Great. And I think Councilmember Harris had something to say. You did, right?
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, Rodney, not really a question, just a comment. I, I'm happy that you're here. I know you have a tough shoes to fill, really tough shoes.
I do. You know, at times, at times, Sean, I lay awake at night. I'm just like, "I don't know how I'm going to do this." I'm just, how am I going to do? It's tough. It's tough.
But I just want to reiterate something you said that you've already noticed in your short two months is how, probably not unique necessarily, Uba Sutter, but it's also something we should not take for granted. And that's the, the outstanding working relationship we all share.
Yes.
And law enforcement community and just the community itself. It's one reason why we all choose to live here. Of course, now I'm joking.
He's getting emotional.
And that is a very, a very important thing, and it's a good thing. And it gives you that feeling in your, in your chest when you go to work and when you show up. Chief Sacks alluded to it a few minutes ago to where different agencies will come together. And at first, it might seem, wait a minute, this is odd. What are these, what are the, what are the chippies doing here? No one's speeding or anything like that. But we're here to help out, no matter what. And it goes both ways. And that's something that I miss, you know? But we still have it in other different situations. But I'm happy that you've already noticed that because it's alive and well here in Uba Sutter. And I'm sure with your leadership, we're going to keep, keep it going that way.
I appreciate that very much, Sean. And I, I appreciate you. He's been real instrumental in my, me getting a good start here. We spent a lot of time together, him just going over all the different points of contact here and, and just trying to give me an understanding of how special it is. So, yeah, I'm very happy for his support and all of the council's support. It's been great, so. Or anything, any other questions? This is your one time to ask a higher patrolman a question. I mean, you all, you see us behind you, you know, you're, oh, you know, you're doing all that. Free questions, that doesn't happen very often.
That you have an open door policy.
All right.
Thank you so very much.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay. And now, we have an introduction from our new Marysville Police Chief, Chris Sacks.
There's no cool sound in my presentation. Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel, thanks, thank you for having me this evening. Just to say a few words, my name's Christian Sacks. I am the newly appointed Chief of Police for City of Marysville. I've been the interim chief since November. Appointed as the full-time chief March 1st of 2018. We've got a lot of great things going on in our little city. It's been quite busy the last 30 days or so, getting my feet underneath me and to try to answer some of the questions. We have 19 sworn officers from top to bottom. I think we have the same problem as most agencies do as far as recruitment and retention, especially with all of the national media stuff that's taken place throughout the whole US. There's a lot less people that want to go into law enforcement profession. And with all the vacancies that are there, everybody's vying for that same pool of people. I can tell you that we have a, a great department for the small amount of people that we have. This Uba Sutter community, since I've taken over, has been open arms with me to kind of relate to what the captain was saying. I too met Sean 20 years ago in 97. I was a patrol officer with the City of Williams, and he was a patrol officer for the Highway Patrol at that point in time. And I've known him for the last 20 years. I came to Marysville, and he came to Marysville. Chief Landon's been a mentor of mine for the last several years. Coached football at River Valley Junior Program for eight years. I know there's a lot of people here from River Valley, but we're transitioning to Sutter, sorry. Got four beautiful kids, two boys, two girls. Some of them are, three of them go to Tier Buena School, and the other one goes to Sutter High School. Right now, my wife works for probation. She's also a licensed clinical social worker. So I do not stand a chance I can't get away with anything at home. So, just in case you were curious about that. So I'm just excited. So thank you for having me. I was asked to give a little bit of a brief on some of the things that we're doing in our, in our little city across the river. We started our Community Partnership Initiative a few months ago so we can interact with our community more effectively. It's almost like a community policing program, but we called it a partnership because it's community-driven and department-managed. If you go to our website, marysvillepd.org, and go to our Community Partnership page, if you click, if you hover over any one of the city maps, or that's the city there, if you hover over any portion of the city, there's four different zones. The zones highlight themselves, and it tells you that's Zone 2, gives you a picture of each officer that's assigned to that zone for the community policing problems. So that way, it puts a name and a face to those issues that are happening in that neighborhood so the people can interact with them. It gives a Zone 2 email address and a phone number for contact information. So if there's anything happening in that particular area, they can contact their, those two officers, start establishing that relationship and that bond with them. Those officers, in turn, identify those key issues in their area, and will be able to have community partnership meetings in those specific zones, identify key stakeholders so that way, they can try to improve the quality of life in their neighborhood. So it's community-driven and us pretty much managing it as we get those groups together. So we've been pretty successful with that so far. There's been a lot of positive feedback. We also launched our Next Door app, and I know that Uba City has that as well. We saw that, interjected that into our Community Partnership Initiative so that way, we can do push-out notifications through our Next Door app. If there's any emergency situations or any parade details or any road closures and stuff like that, we can get information out. So we usually, usually use it solely for pushing out information to the community. So that's a little bit about our Community Partnership Initiative. We have a newly developed Community Court Program. Obviously, homelessness is a big topic in the Uba and Sutter communities in our region. It's been a hot-button topic for quite some time. And so, I tried to figure out, how can we make things a little bit different and try to think of more ideas? Obviously, in Uba County, we have 14 Forward. We have the New Life Building Center with Coordinated Entry, where it's a day center where they can take showers, do laundry. They get assigned a caseworker through Health and Human Services so we can provide additional services to them. We have, from low-level counseling to high-level mental health counseling to job placement and all these things that take place there. But additionally, what we were seeing is, is the homeless population was coming in to get services. If they had warrants for their arrest or outstanding cases, warrants in those, in those pending crimes were barriers for services. So in talking to the Homeless Consortium about it, they decided that, since I had a voice with them, that they would appoint me as the president of the Homeless Consortium. So I'm kind of wearing both hats now as the, you know, the law enforcement official and the Homeless Consortium Executive Board President. So what we did was, is come up with a, a different idea of breaking the cycle. So breaking the cycle is, is helping the homeless individuals that go to the coordinated entry that are trying to get services if they have an outstanding warrant or an outstanding case, and they come to get services. We're now adopting a program where they can get those warrants and those cases continued for a new court date so they can be continued to offer services. And then, once we've designated a special court date in Uba County for them to attend, our first court date is actually going to be on my birthday, May 1st. So what's going to happen is, is those individuals' cases will be heard by a specific judge. And that judge and the caseworkers that will be there are going to try to guide them through the homeless services through the Life Building Center to try to get some services, to try to get back on their feet. And those that do partake in that program, maybe the cases go away, maybe there's leniency on those cases, maybe there's other things that the court can do, but it's trying to help steer them towards that direction. So it's essentially trying to coordinate as many services as we possibly can under one roof. And this gives us a new avenue to kind of drive that. So we are going to be trying to do also an alternative work program out of this as we build it further. A lot of what we're seeing is, is it's a trust issue. A lot of them feel that if they go into court, they're not going to walk out of court. So this will help build that trusting relationship between them and the caseworkers. But then also, a lot of them want to be held accountable from what we're seeing in the surveys that we're doing. And so, they want to be able to come in front of somebody and tell somebody how, you know, good they're doing. And so, it's one of those things where this new Community Court Program will be able to be a avenue for us to help them out. So... We had our Citizens Academy. We had three of them over the course of the last few years. We kind of brought it back out and dusted it off and just re-energized it. We had a record number this year for our Citizen Academy. Anybody's welcome. We had several participants from, from, that reside in Uba City that participated. There's our group photo. We just had graduation at our last council meeting last week. We had a record 48 people attend our Citizen Academy. Some of the things that we did were pedal cart, DUI distracted driving. Some of you have, might have seen it in the newspaper. The newspaper did like an eight-part series on it. DUI wet lab, where we brought in actual subjects that had been drinking and intoxicated. Officers came in and did live field sobriety tests on people that were intoxicated. And then, the four different groups had to decide whether they felt they were under the influence and needed to go to jail, or whether they would let them go. And they got to see the objective signs and symptoms up close and in person. We've got a state-of-the-art shoot simulator at our department. So they got to go through that. So we have over 300 different scenarios where we put all of the citizens that took it in these real scenarios with, you know, Glock handguns, a duty belt. They're reacting to the scenarios just like we see it out on the street. And we got them as closest to that interaction as possible without having to be out on it in the street. So we've got a lot of positive feedback on that. We also did a self-defense course and some use of force. And then, a cannon demonstration. And one of the other things that we highlight on is just because we continue to partner with our local school district with Marysville Joint and Uba County Office of Education because this is always a hot topic with school safety. We implemented this program a couple of years ago. We're the first police department in the nation to incorporate this system into our dispatch center. And this application for school safety is a two-way communication. All of our officers, our staff, our dispatch, they all have capabilities to this system. And what it does is, it gives you real-time communication and student accountability. So from my smartphone right now, I can lock down any school in the whole Marysville Joint Unified School District within about five to seven seconds. We can correspond with teachers and stuff that when they're on lockdown, we coordinate with the student information system so teachers can account for students while they're in the lockdown procedures. So instead of post-incident, like we see a lot of times, you know, we're going through a student roster, and if you have 3,000 kids at your school, and we're trying to find 3,000 kids after an incident, this system allows the teachers to be able to check off all those students during the incident and geolocates where they're at and who accounted for them. So after the incident, maybe we're only looking for 100 or so students that were absent because they were sick or ran off campus during the incident. Allows us to take photos on scene so a teacher has injuries or sees something that's suspicious, can take a photo of it, and it uploads. It notifies everybody on that safety team. It tells us who did it, geolocates where it's at, the school map, along with a contact number that we can contact them and talk to them with. Our dispatch center has it now. So what we end up doing is, we have spheres of influence for all of our schools outlined. And so, what happens is, if we have a pursuit or a major incident that's heading towards one of our schools, and they're heading towards one of those spheres of influence, our dispatchers log into this system, they notify whatever school is in that sphere of influence to let them know that we have police activity in the area so they can implement their protocols. Because a lot of times, what we were seeing is, is we would make those phone calls, and we get the phone tree. And then, as you go through the phone tree, and you finally get to somebody, the incident's pretty much over. And when the officers are out there near the school, you know, you have 100 kids standing at the chain link fence watching everything that you're doing when they should have had their protocols implemented and, and either been on a soft lockdown or a hard lockdown or implementing whatever safety procedure they had. So the reason I bring this up is just, you know, it's always one of those hot topics of school safety because everything that we, you know, see, that's, you know, happening quite often and all the time. And so, it's just a small number of the, of the, some of the projects and things that we're doing in the city. And just thought I would bring those and share those with you guys. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for me, if you have any.
Anyone have any questions?
Cool, I got off easy. None? Go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay. Next, we have our River Valley High School Girls Basketball Team. So can we get our, for them? Okay. So can we get our coach up here? Hi. Thank you so much. Hi. He looks like a student, right? Come on up here. Don't be afraid. Okay. All right. Girl power! Awesome. Well, we want to welcome Coach, okay, there you go. And River Valley High School Varsity Basketball Team. The River Valley High School Girls Basketball Team finished with an overall record of 24-9. Good job. The team won the Tri-County Conference with a record of 11 wins and one loss. The team finished runner-up to the Christian Brothers in, what is it? Sac? Section Division III Playoffs, which is the highest placement in the River Valley High School history. The team went on to win their first state Division III Playoff game on, on the road. They lost in the second round in the state champion West Campus. Here is the River Valley High School Girls Varsity Head Coach, who will introduce each of our players, and then we'll go ahead and present a proclamation.
I just want to say thank you to everybody for recognizing these young ladies. This is an amazing group of, of young ladies. We, as coaches, always preach teamwork. These girls bought into it, and they were the best teammates to one another and the best team I've ever coached. And I've been coaching for about 30 years, so I'm very proud of these young ladies. Okay, so, starting off, we'll have Jasmine.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
Harlan.
Hi.
Hi.
Devin.
Hey.
Lisa.
Hi, everyone.
Great job, ladies.
And thank you so much. Oh, and this is Coach Gano. Thank you.
So with that, we do have our proclamation. So now, therefore, being resolved that I pre-tit ball mayor of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby congratulate the River Valley High School Varsity Girls Team on winning the Tri-County Championship. And I hereby urge all residents of Yuba City to join us in recognizing both the coach and the, the girls' basketball team for the outstanding athletic achievement. So, there is your proclamation.
All right, thank you.
And along with that, we have goodie bags for all of our players. I know. Who doesn't, right? You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome. For the coaches?
Well, for the girls that aren't here.
Okay, and we'll get those to the coaches.
So, Madam Mayor, just, just to add one thing, I know, having a wife that coaches at River Valley, she always talks about her success also being attributable to the Athletic Director. And I at least want to point out that Phil McCauley, the River Valley Athletic Director, is here with us this evening as well.
My daughter was a huge fan of yours. She still talks about you to this day. Awesome. Well, congratulations and thank you again.
Okay, thank you.
Next, if I can get Rosa. Yeah, there you are. Oh, they're all taking off. Hi, how are you? Good, good. Let everybody kind of. Awesome. We also have Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, so tonight we have Rosa Zuniga from Casa de Esperanza here with us. And just, I have a proclamation for you, on, along, on the behalf of our city council. The tragedy of a child, the tragedy of child abuse and neglect affects every community in California, and touches the lives of far too many of our citizens regarding, regardless of culture, ethnic, religious, or socioeconomic levels. If our children are to become productive adults, they should have the right to have a child, childhood free from neglect, physical abuse, sexual molestation, and exploitation. Early identification and intervention are essential to successfully interrupting the, the general cycle of abuse and neglect. Collaboration among professionals, concerned parents, volunteers, and policymakers can help to reduce the level of child abuse and neglect in our communities. And the Observance of Child Abuse Prevention Month provides an excellent opportunity of all citizens to reflect on this tragic crime, while rededicating themselves to taking an active role in the child abuse prevention activities in, in our community. So with that being said, now therefore, we, be it resolved that I pre-tit ball mayor of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Yuba City, and encourage all of our residents to join with our local community efforts to make sure that every child has the right to grow up in a stable, loving environment, free from abuse and neglect. And Rosa, we thank you for all your work that you do to provide that opportunity for every child in our community.
Thank you. The ladies, children, staff of Casa of Light, thank you for your continued support.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you. Okay. All right. Next, we have the Greater Sacramento Economic Council presentation by Mr. Barry Broom. He is the president and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council.
Just kind of as a brief overview, first off, I want to thank all of you, because we were the very first communities that joined us. It was a really important, give a little color to this, as you know, this. That's the first time anyone's ever asked me to do that in my life. Usually it's, now push the button, so. So, just to give kind of color, first off, as I was saying, about three years ago, the community had really come together and taken a look at our economy. And as you know, in California, we've had a challenge with our state understanding some of the things we need at the community level to do a better job of growing businesses. And a group of CEOs got together to determine, you know, how can we do a better job as a region? Because when you look at these communities that are thriving, whether it's a Denver, or a Seattle, or a Dallas-Fort Worth, they really operate as a region. They really understand how their goods and services operate in a regional manner, they understand the role of their airport, their transit systems, and how these things come together to do a better job of creating an economy. And so, one of the very first communities that got involved in supporting the CEOs in this region and doing this was Yuba City. So I want to just kind of acknowledge how important that was, I think, to the credibility of the CEOs. I think a lot of people don't think about that, because they, they see these CEOs, whether it's a Mike Teal from Rayleigh's, or Vivek Ranadive, you know, sort of see them in, you know, kind of a high-level light, but, you know, when they get ready to do something for the community, you know, they get taken out of their comfort zone, and they're like anybody else, they don't want to be embarrassed, you know, they don't want to fail, they're not used to having their pictures in the newspaper. So, when this community joined this coalition, it was a real shot in the arm to the CEOs, and it really spoke to the credibility, because I think one of the challenges we've had in California is, we really haven't had business leaders engaging the community on what to do with the economy. And the end result is, you know, incredible lobbyists and special interest groups are running our state, and not, not always, you know, to the betterment. So, I can say today, we have nineteen communities in this partnership, and over forty CEOs on the board. And so, you know, we now have, you know, the most successful public-private partnership in California, and one of the most successful in the country, and really building a case and presenting our case to the marketplace on why companies should invest in our region. And so, before I go into the presentation, which is more like a three-year outlook from where we're at right now, three years ago, we had about six companies looking at this market. Market meaning all six counties, fifteen cities. Today, that's about a hundred eighty-nine companies. So that's quite a drive from six. And, you know, within the next two months, we'll announce the largest single investment the community has seen in thirty-five years. We're under a non-disclosure agreement, which is what these big companies do. But it'll be about five thousand jobs, four hundred million dollars in investment, it goes to their board, so we're more than cautiously optimistic. And subsequently, there are two or three other companies of that magnitude looking at this market. So when you look at California, we, we need to do a better job at the state in understanding business environments, and small businesses, and how people thrive. But, you know, while we're working through those challenges, you know, it's important that the community comes together and executes a plan to drive jobs. So we've made over eleven hundred presentations in the Bay Area, believe it or not, the companies. We make twenty-five a week. It's very grueling, but we're a new organization, so we have a lot of work to do to establish ourselves and the community. We probably have about fifteen to eighteen companies out of the Bay Area that I think in the next three to six months will choose to market. And it's very interesting, but a lot of the, you know, companies like Sequoia Venture Capital, which have, you know, global reputations in the venture world, are sending companies here. We have a number of companies that'll be announced that are, you know, young and early companies, but still very exciting, that are connected to some of the most important capitalists and technology leaders in the world. So that gives me a lot of excitement and, and hope about what we're accomplishing economically. And then, of course, you know, we competed on the Amazon bid, we did not get shortlisted, but Amazon now has three projects over a million square feet looking at the market. So sometimes you win when you lose, right? So, you know, how do you get all the Amazon leadership to pay attention to our community? Well, you compete for the headquarters. California didn't offer a tremendous package to the company, but, you know, we got deep enough and far enough to be able to present to the company, they learned a lot about us. We had over six million dollars in press and impressions, you know, we used Vivek and the King's ownership as our spokesman, so we could get on ESPN and CNBC. So there's a lot of great stories about our region that are getting picked up, a lot of momentum. We have twenty-five thousand people now from the Bay Area move into our region, if you can believe that. So that you will know, in the late nineties, that was about eighty-five hundred, and just a few years ago, that was seventeen thousand five hundred. I know there's mixed feelings about the moving here for a lot of reasons, but, you know, when you're working on the economy, the ability to attract talented people, and the ability to show industry and businesses that you can attract talented people is some of the most important indicators. And right now, our region has the fastest-growing qualified workforce in the United States. And because, you know, they, for years and years and years, people, I say, oh, people move the Bay Area up here to retire, but the people moving here from the Bay Area now are thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four years old with family, they're highly educated, they're coming out of the Adobes, the Googles. And of course, you know, the key thing is, they're going back down there to work. So ultimately, what we hope to be able to do is, as that population trend comes up, we'll be able to translate into industry following the momentum. And of course, we have to do a lot better job as a community at capitalize on it. At the national level, we have over two, two thousand national business contacts that we communicate to quarterly, I'll show you our, our site selection pitch. So when companies make decisions, you know, they have national firms like KPMG, or Deloitte, or ENY firms that you may have heard of, that actually advise them on how to evaluate communities. So a big part of what we do as an organization is work with those consulting networks on data and evidence on why this is a great place to invest, because a lot of times what happens when companies are making these investment decisions, the executives are running the companies, not evaluating where they should go. And they retain consulting networks to do that, often referred to as site selection consultants. So about two thousand every quarter get presentations from us electronically, I'll show you our latest video. Twenty-five a week in the Bay Area, we made eleven hundred presentations. We now have about two hundred and fifty business contacts in the Bay Area that call us, take our call, refer us leads, refer us deals. And I think in the next one or two years, you know, you're going to see the nose of the airplane, so to speak, tip a little bit in our direction. And that, of course, also requires our CEOs to weigh in harder at the state level. I mean, some of the policies coming down at the state of California, they're just awful. I don't know what else to say about them. And they're surprising. So I'm still a babe in the woods, I've been here three years. Three years ago, actually February I came here, they gave me a file, ten CEOs. I trekked out here a few times, Darren helped me, we got some great support here, and then, you know, the ball, you know, slowly got rolling. Just so you know how strong the CEO's support is, forty is the limit on our board of CEOs, there's five CEOs on a waiting list to join our board. So that's a good sign. And I think what they're seeing is the community coming together, they're seeing cooperation. They were a little bit cynical at first, a lot of times when I said we have to have public partners, you know, they were so used to how they were treated by the state capital, well, the local governments will never want to work with us. And I said, well, you know, if you open the door and reach out and ask for support, you might be surprised. And, and I think Yuba City was like the third community to do it, and it was really important because you anchored us as a regional group. You know, we couldn't, we wouldn't have gotten Sutter and Yuba to get involved unless you came in first. So as this organization grows, I hope that you'll always take a sense of pride as a community that you were a critical catalyst. The second thing that I've learned from doing this, is sometimes, you know, it's a, you know, we've raised twenty-one million dollars, and so if you look at the investment you're making, it's getting leveraged quite a bit. But sometimes it's those one or two things that people didn't think that would happen that gains the confidence of other people to step up. And you really did that, so I'm super grateful to you, and we're working hard to do a great job. Now, before I go into the presentation, you know, I want you to just kind of get a picture. So if you thought of your community, it's, if you think of the economy, you know, this community is offering a set of goods and services to the economy, right? So you have this tremendous food and agricultural capabilities out in this community. This is a young community, it's highly educated, so when companies evaluate us, you know, the youth of your community and the educational attainment levels raise the profile of the region in the eyes of these analysts that are measuring them for companies. I think one of the other things, too, that I want to be able to get done over time is the hydro power capabilities out in this market. There's nothing like it in Northern California. And hydro power is a hundred percent clean, it can be affordable, and it can be uninterruptible. So what that means is, a lot of times, you know, you're going to see companies more and more, especially the big tech companies, they want clean power, because a lot of the young professionals are, are evaluating companies on the basis of how environmentally sound they are now. So the ability to present clean power, uninterruptible, uninterruptible meaning like solar power doesn't occur at night, so it can be interrupted, could be a very powerful tool. It's a long-term proposition, but I think this hydrogen power capabilities in Yuba County could single-handedly change the outcome of this economy in a significant way. And that's really important for us to, to learn. And I think that's one of the things you get from an organization like ours, is, you know, to be able to communicate back to you, what are your real critical assets and how powerful they are. Because a lot of times, you know, that facility's been there forever, people have sort of flown into the radar screen, the state's done different things with it, but, you know, the entire Seattle economy is powered by hydrogen. And one of, and the biggest reason that Tesla chose Reno is hydrogen power. So Tesla could get affordable power that they needed to do all that manufacturing, and since they're an electric vehicle, they could go back to the marketplace and say, you know, we're using a carbon-free energy source for our battery technology. So I think, I think, long-term, this hydrogen facility would be great. And on the food-nag side, you know, you're going to see a lot of traction on that, the food-nag industry's growing at five-point-four percent, which is very healthy. We have the fastest-growing qualified workforce, we're still doing well with healthcare. You know, you can see where the state doesn't do the right things, you can read it in our economy. So all the behaviors from the state that aren't correct, correct in the minds of people working on the economy, maybe not in theirs, you can just read it in our economy. So one of the things that I've asked you to consider is AB 2596, which I know is on your docket, which requires the state to go through a state plan, analyze and report back to the public what the unintended consequences are of their behavior. And I'll move on to the presentation after I bring this. There's a lot of data out now on fifteen dollars an hour minimum wage, it's not very good for the people that need the wage. And so what's happening, where fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage is occurred, even though it's a nice idea that everybody suddenly gets a raise to fifteen dollars. In the Seattle market, there's been a ten percent contraction in jobs already, at jobs that pay nineteen dollars an hour and less. And in the areas where there's fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage, the employers are paying for it by having their healthcare dropped and their 401K dropped. So, you know, we got to help our state to understand a little bit more about the dynamics. And then on a workforce side, we all know, if we train people and educate people, then obviously they can find opportunities and employment. And we want to build a community around empowering people to be skilled and trained. So this is a little more technical going forward, but I always like to say you go from the simple to the sophisticated on the economy. My first year and a half, I just tried to get people to take my call, give me a meeting, hear a story. Now, you know, we've got a lot of traction on that, so we're getting some good granular penetration in the market with that. Now it gives us an opportunity to do some things like challenge the state in a conversation on competitiveness. By the way, that's the first bill we've introduced, we're not going to be a big advocacy organization, but, you know, we have groups in Los Angeles and San Diego endorsing it, the Bay Area Council's doing with it, we have thirty-five organizations statewide that have endorsed this legislation, which basically tells the state, before you take an action, why don't you measure it to see how it works? And after you've taken a lot of action, why don't you measure to see what the strengths or the consequences of that? And so I think, in, in our state, with a hundred nineteen, with nineteen thousand regulations, there's plenty of things to measure. So, why don't we go ahead and go through the presentation, I got a little clicker here, I guess it's mine? So, you know, this will get more sophisticated over time, but, you know, what is our regional brand when people hear the name Greater Sacramento, when they hear Yuba City, Sutter County, when they hear Folsom, you know, what is their first inclination nationally and within the market? So you have to have a reputation. trained. So this is a little more technical going forward, but I always like to see you go from the simple to the sophisticated on the economy. My first year and a half, I just tried to get people to take my call, give me a meeting, hear a story. Now, you know, we've got a lot of traction on that. So we're getting some good granular penetration in the market with that. Now it gives us an opportunity to do some things like challenge the state in a conversation on competitiveness. By the way, that's the first bill we've introduced. We're not going to be a big advocacy organization. But, you know, we have groups in Los Angeles and San Diego endorsing it. The Bay Area Council's doing with it. We have 35 organizations statewide that have endorsed this legislation, which basically tells the state, before you take an action, why don't you measure it to see how it works? And after you've taken a lot of action, why don't you measure to see what the strengths or the consequences of that? And so I think, in our state, with 119, with 19,000 regulations, there's plenty of things to measure. So why don't we go ahead and go through the presentation? I got a little clicker here. I guess it's mine. So, you know, this will get more sophisticated over time. But, you know, what is our regional brand? When people hear the name Greater Sacramento, when they hear Yuba City, Sutter County, when they hear Folsom, you know, what is their first inclination nationally and within the market? So you have to have a reputation. And of course, you know, the reputation has always been that, you know, we're a sleepy government town with some ag. And of course, changing that reputation is really important. And of course, this headquarters location with 5,000 jobs will demonstrate that some of the things we're saying about our region are more realized than people believe. So building that brand's really important. And things like going after Amazon's a big part of the brand, because, you know, people probably didn't think this region would have the courage to go after 50,000 jobs and compete with Boston and New York City. So, you know, sort of making a statement about yourself in these processes are a really important part of how you build the brand. Infrastructure, we're working with Secog and others. I think we can do a lot better job at building infrastructure and transit capabilities. And of course, part of that infrastructure are things like the hydrogen power capabilities in this community, but also the success of the airport. We've worked very hard with our airport, and the airport's becoming a very powerful asset, which is important. Because as you know, when the county first made that investment, we really struggled with it. It's now the number one rated airport for service in the US, JD Power. And it's, year to year, flights have grown 17%. And it's a lesson in there that if you make good, strong infrastructure investments, good thing happens. And of course, our workforce development, we just found out some kind of cool things about workforce development that I think will be surprising, but also a strength. And then advanced clusters. So this is really important. So when we talk about industries, it's not just, you know, we're not just recruiting companies or talking to companies like we're selling them a house. You know, what are the industry capabilities? So things like gaming, you know, there's a tremendous gaming capabilities here. You know, in this region, the new Star Wars game was presented and invented by a regional technologists. You know, our ability to do better in healthcare and life science and medical. So we've got to really understand these different industries, what we can do with them, how food ag works, how's life science works. If we got a hydrogen facility, what does that mean in energy? And all these different specific industries have specific needs, specific things they care about, specific things they measure. You know, what can we do with Beal? Can Beal be converted into aerospace and defense? Obviously, you know, it's a highly top-secret institution. But, you know, how do we leverage these things more deeply going forward so that they become assets to the community, not just something we drive by? So I talked a little bit about the brand and collateral. We have a really good marketing communications team. I think this is probably the most progress that we've made. I think it indicates in the kind of turnout from the Bay Area to reception we're getting nationally. You know, we go into Seattle now quite a bit, as well as LA. Both the Seattle and the LA markets are very interested in our region. So the LA markets think a lot of us, Seattle thinks a lot of us. We'll be moving nationally into Chicago, Washington DC, New York City, Dallas and Atlanta going forward. And what happens in these big markets, you know, their big ecosystems and a lot of the investment banking, merger acquisition consultants, you know, inside these big markets, you know, so for instance, most of the food ag conversation in the US, from an investment standpoint, occurs in Dallas and occurs in Chicago. So it's sort of where the expertise is. Like if you wanted to talk to technology, you would go to Silicon Valley. Specialization, you know, we use all types of tools. So we ran a Extend Your Runway campaign in Silicon Valley. We do a lot with digital. We do a lot with what they call geo-fencing. So one of the things we did with Amazon that was really cool, I don't do any of this because, you know, I'm over 50 and I'm still struggling with text messages. But, you know, I hire everybody under 30, too, so they know how to turn on a computer. But a lot of our marketing communications team, you know, they're all 29 years old, so this is normal to them. And so what we did is, we geo-fenced Amazon, meaning, you know, you can actually, through a digital technique, identify a headquarters like Amazon. You can identify all the addresses of their building and send a series of marketing communications through Twitter, Facebook and different messages to where everybody at that campus is being communicated by us to them, only all of a sudden, they're sitting around looking going, you know, what's this about a hydrogen facility in Yuba County? And what's, you know, what's this about a Folsom rodeo? Or what's going on at UC Davis? So suddenly, all these employees start getting all these impressions on strengths and assets in our market. So things like Google, Salesforce, Amazon, we spend a lot of time directly targeting their headquarters because we can pick up and penetrate a conversation with their decision-makers through this. And believe it or not, we did this at Salesforce, we can tell what kind of companies are coming to Salesforce to meet with them. So we did Salesforce for 10 days, and we tracked over 1,200 companies internationally that flown to San Francisco to go to Salesforce to talk to them about business. And Salesforce has been here 12 times, looking at this market. So we think at some point, we're going to get a Salesforce tower as well. So that's an example of specialization. And of course, from a public relations standpoint, you know, we have a New York-based and a San Francisco-based firm that, so if you pick up and read stories about us in the Wall Street Journal, Forbes Magazine, CNBC, CNN, that's now been placed by our organization. Our organization has a partnership with a national consulting firm that basically takes stories about our community and lobbies them to cover us like you would if you were a public relations person for a candidate. And then, of course, new markets. I mean, I talked about LA, Seattle, New York. But we're going to roll out in July, a partnership with the Bay Area on China, which I think we can do very well with. So obviously, business climate's really important. You know, the jobs bill you'll vote on later tonight basically requires the state to enter into a plan. So what most states do, Governor Brown didn't do this, but most states do, when they go in and ask for all of our money, they actually give a plan on what they're going to do with it. I know that's really unusual since we're all Californians, but that's what other states do. So what other states do is, the governor presents a budget and a plan on what to do with it. And the plan is in relationship to how they're going to grow the economy. And so what this bill does is require the government, governor by law, when the governor introduces a budget, to introduce the plan. And this is what Washington does, Arizona does it, Utah does it, Texas does it, Virginia does it. And so that allows people to have a debate over what they're doing with all the public money in relationship to how they're growing our economy. And so things like impact fees or permitting, a statewide ED strategy. I mean, most states, when they're competing for jobs, you know, one of the things that really disadvantaged us in Amazon was the other states' governors were traveling to Seattle with business leaders to talk to Jeff Bezos. And that wasn't, that hasn't been the philosophy of this government. And that's one of the things we want to put pressure on the system now to change. Because while there's a new governor coming into power, we want them to know who we are as a region and what our expectations are. And things like transit connectivity to the Bay Area and supporting us on air service and doing more for our universities are some of the things you get an opportunity to have a conversation about if there's a plan. And it's very important. Workforce development, so I'll give you the first information. I haven't told Darren or Steve this. So, you know, when you're new to a place, you kind of run around and basically, especially if you're new to California, you trip over coffee tables. That's what I, I always know when there's a coffee table, when my shins hit it as hard as I can possibly slam it into it. So I was looking at workforce, and you know, when you're thinking about a skilled workforce and skilled training, that's something we should be really great at. We should be the best community in the country at training talented people. So with our weather and our appeal, we should be able to attract the talent. And then, of course, with our higher education assets and our community college system, we should be best at training it. And we haven't verified the data yet, but we've been gathering what our region spends every year on career technical education and workforce training. And so far, annually, we have found over $1.3 billion in programs. Now, who can name a training program they really admire in our region? So, when you look at the, when you look at things like the automotive industry, which California is, you know, a leader in electric vehicles, we should be creating up to 225,000 jobs in the next 10 years in California. How do we capture 10 or 20% of that in our region? And then you look at what we're spending in training, we should be, and you, we have these issues with inner-city kids without jobs. We should be training people at the highest possible level. California almost spends 10 times more on training than any state in the nation. But as you know, they attach a lot of rules to it. They attach a lot of bureaucracy to it. So it gets sent to our community colleges and our universities with all these behavioral guidelines that somebody has thought of in the state capital, and these programs lack flexibility. So we're going to be talking about this more in the next two months. But for over $1 billion, we ought to be able to train every resident in any profession we need. And one of the big challenges in getting people employed is the skills gap. So this is a good example of analytics and how that works. And then, of course, building advanced industry models means, you know, how do we create these new capabilities? So could we build a food and agricultural technology accelerator in Yuba City? Of course we could. And we have all the growers and the capabilities out that. So while we're out talking to Bayer and BASF and Monsanto and companies like that, they're going to take a look internally to your community to see, you know, how creative and innovative are you are in our industry. And so this Bear Crop Science Partnership that we rolled out is going to be really important because Bayer is going to be willing to work with any food and ag company that can demonstrate that you have the ability to increase crop enhancement. And so that's a little bit an example of a granular achievement on a technology side. So when we go and talk to an HM Klaus, you know, it's not just about being in a great place where you're close to growers and UC Davis, but there's something more specific going on here. And that is our ability to execute microbial. And this is one of the most significant scientific communities in the United States. So in our STEM education capabilities, science, technology, engineering, math, you know, we are fourth in the United States among top 25 markets in STEM, and it's primarily our agricultural science capabilities. So we have more scientists in our region than the Bay Area and Silicon Valley combined. So these are the kind of things that our evidence and analytic digs up, then we verify it, then you'll see it on our website and in our presentations. And then when we go in and walk into a, an investment team about our community, you know, we're not just saying, hey, it's a great place to live and you can afford a house here. You know, we've got something more deeper and robust. So I'm going to get to the site selection video, and we'll see if it works. I don't know how that turns on. And I'll stop by this. So before you turn this on, let me give one, one quick overview, and then I'll answer a question. So these site selection consultants get fed tons of information. And most of the information that they pick up and read comes online. So our video capabilities are really critical in our ability to communicate our position. So I'll show this video, and I'll stop and answer any questions. But this is just a two-minute video that goes out to thousands of investment advisors every two months. And then we follow up with, with visits and calls and, it's not going to play? Todd Goner, it was really nice. I thought we had that, we didn't, we're not going to get it up?
Well, I wasn't working before, Barry.
It wasn't? Well, thanks for the tip there, you know. Anyway, okay. Well, this is what it's like, okay? So pretend I'm a video. Shh. I'm just joking. I won't do it. But you can go on my line, on our, online and see Greater Sacramento Economic Council. But in two and a half minutes, the 10 most important things to an investment advisor is on it. So we have 365,000 college students within a 90-mile radius. So we went, we have one of the highest, higher education workshops, tells them about our qualified workforce growth fastest in the US, shows our commute times, our, the profitability of our market. And it's really built around this concept of a California option. So we're the last place in California you can live if you want to put a business here. And so it's a little bit of acknowledging that San Diego, LA, the Bay Area and Silicon Valley has lost basic sustainability on the economy and hopefully tip California investments into our community so that we can continue to contribute to the state's growth, but also support our own activities. So I will close with that. Was that longer than I should have been? But, you know, hey, this is the best I can do.
Yes, but enjoyable, Barry. Thank you.
Well, then, you know, that's what's really important. So too bad the video didn't work because that was the only part of this that was interesting. And I, and I didn't play on an NCAA, a national championship football team, but I will tell you, I was pretty good at wiffle ball and gym, if you have only seen it. So I was all gym and that. But anyway, so thank you for your support. We're working hard for you and the rest of the community. And if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, I'll sit down and, and I apologize if I took too long.
Thank you, Barry.
Barry, in 10,000 words or less.
I can do this. I can do this because I know about 9,000, I start losing people. All right, go ahead.
I attended a meeting down in Sacramento the other day. We had, down at Capitol Mall, they're the Champions Program. One thing that I took away from that, one of the many things, is you mentioned that Yuba City was one of the lead cities that home-grow their jobs.
That's right.
Could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, you're the number one city that home-grows their jobs. So, so the reason people work regionally, so you know, Roseville's got this really powerful economy in Folsom, but they only produce 15% to 18% of their jobs for their residents. So you see all this traffic? That's because people are driving to where their jobs at. So the number one community in the region at producing their own jobs is Yuba City at 38%. So that's something you should take a lot of pride in.
That was good. Thank you for bringing that up.
I think you did that under 9,000, right?
I did. I think that was like in seven or 12 words, which I'm stunned by my brevity.
See, we know you could do it if you really tried.
I'm a pitch guy, you know what I mean? It's like, that's why you only invite me out every two years. You can only take it so much.
Any other questions?
All right. Well, listen, thank you so much. And thank you for your support. And I know on behalf of all those CEOs, they were very grateful to you. And I really appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
All right. Well, we're done with the presentations and proclamations. So we are going to move on to the public communication on items on the agenda. Being that this is a special meeting, we will only hear any comments or concerns on items on this special agenda tonight. So if there are any, when the item comes up, please come to the podium. So first, we have our bid opening, and it's our senior activity center. Accessibility to the courtyard improvements. Ben?
All right. Good evening. So the item I have before you is in regards to the senior center replacement of the courtyard. I was, I was before the council a couple of months ago, and we, we basically bid the project. If you remember, it has to do with replacing the courtyard behind the senior center located at the corner of Ainsley and Woodworth. And so, there we go. So right, right in this area. So there's a lot of issues going on with the ADA compliance and just not being real functional, with it being, with it being located adjacent to the parking lot as the main entrance primarily used for the, for the people using the facility. So we're trying to bring it up to ADA code and make it a functional area. We put out the bid. We had, honestly, had a tough time bidding it. A lot of, I think the bid environment is different. And so we extended the bid opening to get a couple more, a couple bids in and called everybody we could to get ahold of them to try to put a bid. And so we did receive two bids. The two bids from, what's the bid, CNW Construction out of Rescue, California, and then NFB Construction out of Sacramento area. CNW Construction, it was the low bid at 164,900. They've recently done some work with the Housing Authority. So they're familiar with the federal process. And so with that, the, the project, it came in a little bit higher than we originally anticipated. I think the project that we were hoping the construction came in around 135, with a total project cost around 170. With this work, 164,900, we're still, with a little staff time, we're still working to keep it within that budget. There's plenty of money in, allocated in the CIP fund for the project. And so with that, with it being federal community development grant money that's funding it, we still recommend to proceed forward with the project. So with that, I'm recommending that we award the project to CNW Construction in the amount bid, authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ben. Bring it back to council for any questions or a motion.
Senator Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for staff's recommendation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Thank you, Ben. Next, we have our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time council votes on the motion unless members of city council staff or the public have any particular item that they would like to have discussed or removed from the consent calendar for action.
Move the consent calendar?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Moving right along, we have our general items. We have our mid-manager's letter of understanding from Natalie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
On behalf of Natalie?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not Natalie tonight. Natalie's cough is getting the better of her. So she asked that I present this item tonight.
Absolutely.
So the, the existing mid-manager LOU expired on June 30, 2017. Just for reference purposes, the previous agreement terms were, it eliminated the 10% furlough program. The employees started contributing towards CalPERS retirement benefits. Two floating holidays were added. There was a $1,000 one-time distribution. And then through a 2015 side letter, there was a $2,500 one-time distribution and a 2% salary increase. So the mid-managers in city have been meeting since April 2017 to negotiate a new agreement. So the mid managers in city have been meeting since April 2017 to negotiate a new agreement. The terms of the new agreement are it's a two-year agreement which will expire June 30th, 2019, a one-time distribution of $1,500 or 2% of the base salary, whichever is greater in year one, a 2% salary increase in year two, transition to a new nine-step salary schedule from the current five-step salary schedule for new hires. It includes a long-term disability program. It increases the death benefit for employees from $50,000 to $100,000. So with that, the fiscal impact for this current fiscal year is $53,200 in which we're requesting a supplemental appropriation. And then it's projected for a fiscal impact in year 18, 19 at $56,900. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. We'll bring it back to council for any questions for Diana.
So, Madam Mayor, I just want to provide a point of clarification that I know your council understands, but for the benefit of the public and anyone who may watch this later, uh, there was mentioned on the previous screen of moving from a five-step to a nine-step. And just so the public understands, uh, the, the range remains the same. Uh, so usually there's a 5% increment in step increases, and this doesn't add four more 5% steps. This provides for our employees, new employees, to move through that same schedule just simply at a slower pace. Uh, so they're going to benefit from wage increases annually should they, uh, there be merit for the increase, but it wouldn't, it would come at a half a step rather than a full step. Uh, and given, uh, our, our changing times of the economy and government, we see this as, uh, other cities are doing this, and so we're moving toward that direction as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Diana, what is the approximate cost of, of, uh, moving the death benefit or, or the life insurance, uh, to the category that is being recommended?
So the, the death benefit was increasing for a variety of contracts. So it's, it was proposed for the, um, the E-team, the bid managers, the first levels. And we also increased, we're proposing to increase local one as well. Natalie, do you know the total cost for that?
I can remember the total cost and it wasn't specific to the...
Right. And so we don't have, my recollection was it was to provide that benefit. It was not very costly. And so that's why it's recommended to move forward. Also, we did surveys of other agencies to see the comparison of how our benefits, particularly related to this, related to other agencies. And this puts us more in alignment with other agencies within the area.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel doesn't have any questions. We do have a speaker card on this, um, from Pat Miller.
Just a couple of questions. Um, who are the mid managers? I don't need names, but positions. And how many are there? Because it didn't mention that in the staff report.
Natalie or Diana, can you?
So the mid manager positions, so they're, in, in terms of alignment within the organization, they are between the directors and the first level supervisors. So throughout the city, there's approximately 12 to 15, uh, mid managers. And so for instance, what are those positions? You have, um, senior engineers, you have the deputy public works director for engineering. Um, you have an analyst three in the fire department, um, the animal control manager, the parks manager. And so these are positions between the directors and the first level supervisors.
So between the department head and the...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Pat. Okay. Um, anybody else who would like to speak on this item? No? Okay. We'll bring it back to council for discussion or, uh, motion.
I'd move to approve the item.
Okay. We, uh, we have a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, Natalie. Thank you, Diana.
You're welcome.
And Diana, to you next. Um, we have State Route, uh, 20, State Route 99 interchange approval for a project study report.
All right. Thank you. Putting my other hat on. Uh, so the background on the, this particular project. So Caltrans has a recently adopted 2017 State Route 99 Transportation Corridor Concept Report that identifies a planned project for construction of an urban interchange at the State Route 20, State Route 99 intersection. It's shown up in previous, uh, Transportation Corridor Concept Reports. This is not the first time. It's always shown up as right-of-way acquisition within the timeframe of prior to 2036. And so with that, the, um, they have an estimated cost for the right-of-way for the project of $31 million, but there's no cost estimate in there. It's currently in the 2017 for the total project cost. So in early 2016, as part of a transportation workshop, city council expressed a desire to advance the project forward. And so the first step in that is development of a project study report. And so with that, um, in August 2016, council executed an agreement with Caltrans to prepare the project study report in the amount of $292,000. So the purpose of a project study report is to provide an analysis of various interchange alternatives. At that point in time, it does not do any environmental analysis. It does not determine a preferred, um, interchange alternative. It's just strictly identifying alternatives and putting information in there related to each alternative. So this particular project study report evaluates four alternatives. The single quadrant with slip-on ramp, a single point, a single quadrant and a single point with lowering of SR20 by 12 feet. So for some general background for all of the alternatives, with all of them, Highway 99 would shift to the west slightly. So here's Highway 99 now. It would shift to the west slightly. It would provide a grade separation between Highway 99 and Highway 20. Access to SR99, uh, from Woodward Street, um, East Onstot, West Onstot here would be close, would be terminated. Kelton Way would be connected to West Onstot, or East Onstot-Fronage Road right here. And then also it's assuming that West Onstot would tie into a connection to Civic Center Boulevard and the connection to Woodward would take place through this alignment right here. Driveway access to Highway 20 will be closed on the south side from the eastern portion limits to Civic Center Boulevard. And driveway access along SR20 west of Civic Center would remain open. It also assumes that the city would acquire the Union Pacific Railroad right-of-way. And then the city would also be responsible for construction of this, uh, alignment of Civic Center Boulevard. Design constraints on all four alternatives includes weaving distance, merging tapers and shoulders on SR20. And so with that, I'll go into a little bit of information related to each specific alternative. So the single quadrant with the slip-on ramp, basically if you are eastbound Highway 20 wanting to access southbound 99, you go through this slip-on ramp. If you are westbound Highway 20 wanting to access southbound 99, you take this hook ramp. You can see from this in terms of the footprint of the interchange, pretty expansive still within the Caltrans right-of-way here. Um, a little bit of right-of-way would be required on this side and then right-of-way would be required along here as well. Alternative two is the single point interchange. So generally speaking, this one's a little bit smaller footprint. Um, here it's controlled by one intersection. And so you come in here, it's to be a signalized intersection and then you would access Highway 20 if you wanted to make a U-turn. You would do so through this movement right here. Alternative three is the single quadrant. With the single quadrant, it's controlled by two separate signalized intersections. One here and one here. With this, um, to access Highway 99 from Highway 20, you would be turning here and then also turning on this ramp here. And so in terms of efficiency, this one would not be as efficient as the others because of the control by two signalized intersections and then traffic would stack up significantly on Highway 20 waiting for that 99 movement. And then finally, the fourth alternative that evaluated is the same as the single point. The difference being that this assumes that Highway 20 is lowered 12 feet to reduce the overall height of the structure itself for 99. And so Highway 20 would dip down and then come back up. So all of these require, um, some pretty significant right-of-way acquisition, some full, some partial acquisition. And then as noted previously, it does impact driveway access. In terms of costs, um, the, the costs range from 100 million for the single quadrant with slip-on ramp to 100, almost 131 million for the single point with the lowering of SR20. To proceed with the next phase of the project, uh, which would be project approval and environmental document, Caltrans has estimated that phase to cost $5,587,000 of which no funds are programmed at this time at the local, state or federal level to move on to that next phase of the project. So their request tonight is to authorize the public works director to sign the project study report, uh, project development support for the State Route, State, State Route 20, State Route 99 interchange. And then what happens is, um, once the document's signed, it goes back to Director Benapal at Caltrans District Three for his signature. And then at that point, it is an approved document. There was a question about what's the lifespan of a PSR. The last PSR that was done for this interchange, this intersection, was 1994. And so we now have one in 2018. In terms of how long could this document survive? Um, you know, you would need to update cost estimates. You would need to update the risk analysis. And then also evaluate, are there any other interchange alternatives that have been developed since this time that should be considered, uh, as you move forward with the next phase? And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Diana. We'll bring it back to council for any questions at this time.
Yes, uh, through the mayor. I have a question regarding, uh, any of the funding reimbursable or match funding that, uh, Yuba City would be putting out in any way. How, is there any of that involved in this? Because, you know, we put out the 292. Is that just our share to do that? Or is there anything that's reimbursable with that?
The agreement that was executed with Caltrans is the city paid the $292,000 and there's no reimbursement from Caltrans or any other agency for that.
And then from now on, it's, we need to, uh, uh, find and encourage state, uh, and federal involvement in this since they are two state highways and, you know, routes that are designated as, uh, uh, main highways. So that's, our next step is to go after state and federal funding.
Correct. To encourage...
As difficult as that is, we need to...
Yeah. To encourage Caltrans to see the importance of this project to the region.
Right. Through the mayor. So Diana, what would it, what would the next steps be to be able to get us in line? Um, should Tiger, uh, grant money become available? Uh, what, what next steps would we have to, uh, engage in to be able to put us in a position for, for those type of funds?
To really be competitive, there are several steps. Number one, um, to identify the preferred alternative. So that would be to move forward with the P.A. and E.D. phase so that you complete the environmental document, you have a selected alternative and you know what project you're moving forward with. Number two, what would be extremely important is to identify, uh, Highway 99 and Highway 20 as major goods movement corridors. Um, the region has really focused on I-5. And so you've seen a lot of funding go towards that corridor for goods movement. And so for Tiger and the, um, the infra grants, those types of things, they're looking for goods, regional goods movement and improvement to goods movement throughout the state. So it's convincing the state, it's convincing, um, others that, you know, these two state highways that bisect Yuba City are, uh, used heavily for the movement of goods throughout the region.
Thank you for, for that answer. What, what would be just a rough estimate, um, at 10 years, at 15, at 20 years out for increased cost in a project like this?
Significant. If I just base it upon, you know, the average engineering news record construction cost index increase on an annual basis, that typically ranges in the 3% to 3.5%. So if you compounded that annually over a 10-year period, 15-year period, um, you know, you could see that that could increase the cost 35, 40% over the time of that, um, that period. Now, you know, these are planning level estimates, so they, they are considered to be conservative estimates. But when you consider the cost of the Fifth Street Bridge at $70 million and you think, well, how does one interchange cost this much? Well, a large portion of that is right-of-way acquisition because it would be impacting a lot of properties. But then also just the sheer volume of what's being constructed and the impacts of you are moving traffic on two state highways for construction. There are significant costs associated with that. It's not, you know, with the Fifth Street Bridge, fortunately, we're able to build a bridge to the north and keep traffic on the existing bridge. With this, just the traffic control alone would be extremely expensive. And then when you're looking at realignment of utilities, um, you know, it's a very costly project, but it will just continue to grow over time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, we have the State Revolving Fund Grant Loan Agreement for the Water Meter Replacement Project.
Were we supposed to make a recommendation on that?
Oh, that's right. You don't need an action, right?
I'd move the item, uh, for, uh, signatures.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. We have Mandi, Chohan.
Good evening. Tonight I will be making a recommendation to authorize Public Works Director to sign a funding agreement and to give authorization to Public Works Department staff to move forward with the Water Meter Replacement Project. A small background. The city council authorized staff to file an application for the State Revolving Fund Low Interest slash Grant Funding back in January 2017 for the Water Meter Replacement Project. And that application had been approved. That had been approved with total $8 million cost. Uh, the funding terms are $4 million will be principal forgiveness out of the $8 million. So we will be responsible paying for only $4 million at 1.8% interest rate over 10-year period. And another condition for that application is that we will be replacing the water meter heads to with the cellular read heads. So the water meter and the heads are on your left side here. So the meters have two components. One is the meter body. I'm also going to turn to the picture here. So the same thing, I, we have the picture. The, the meter body itself and then the meter head and the transmitter together. So, so the meter, uh, so, so the meter reads the, reading how much water is being consumed. And the meter head transmits the data from the meter through, uh, two options, either the radio read network or through a cellular network. So currently, all of our meters are radio read. Means, uh, the city staff drives through some specific routes, uh, throughout the city and then collect the data. Whereas the, the cellular heads, we don't need to drive throughout the city. Uh, all the data gets transmitted through a cellular tower and we can download and it also becomes accessible through an, uh, smartphone application. So basically we have two, well, the, the meter heads comes with the battery. The battery's life is approximately 10 years. The battery's life is approximately 10 years, and the meter body lasts about 15 to 20 years. So most of our meter heads have been in service for over 10 years. They need replacement now. And we are expecting additional 10 years from the water meter bodies itself. So in order to replace the water meter heads, we have two choices, either to go with in-kind radio read meters or to go with the cellular read heads. So option number two, which is the cellular read heads, is the only one eligible for this grant and low-interest opportunity. And 2017, our existing CIP budget identifies this project, and this project has been identified as priority project in 2016 rate study and has been approved. And there will be no additional cost to the rate pairs to move this project forward. So this is the planning-level cost estimates of the two options. Option one is to replace with the in-kind meter heads, about $4.3 million, no grant, and we have to go with a conventional loan for that. The total cost to the city would be with the loan, principal and interest would be $5.2 million. Option two, which is eligible for the grant and, and has been approved, the total cost to the city would be about $4.4 million for the next 10 years. So option two will have about $1.25 million savings over the next 10 years. And the breakdown is provided here, about $300,000 from the construction savings, $450,000 on labor, plus our overheads, and then additional $500,000 on the interest rate. So this, the meter provides application on the smart devices, the smartphones, et cetera. And customers can get a real-time data on them, and they can see, and they can probably can also set, and probably they will be able to set their alarms on their phones if there is any leak or something going on, so that, so the real purpose, why the state is providing the grant opportunity is to save water, conserve water. And it also helps the city to see where the water leaks are, and then we can go and fix them. So again, this is the picture of the water meter and water, water meter body and head and the transmitter. So, so basically, the, the meter takes the readings, and then the, then the head and the transmitter sends the data over to a cloud-based system, which will be downloadable to the city computers and also have access to the customers. And it also provides a, a, the analysis to the customers, how they can compare their recent uses, seven-day uses, or the monthly uses, how they're doing on it. So with that, I would move towards a recommendation that City Council approves the agreement, called the Construction Installment Agreement, and authorize the Public Works Director to sign on behalf of the city the agreement, and also direct the Public Works Department to move forward with the development of the Water Meter Replacement Project. And I would like to point one thing out, and the, the staff report, which has been uploaded on the, on the website, has an agreement with the 20-year loan term that was redlined on the staff report. And the, we, the staff put a memo this evening to the council for consideration that agreement has been replaced with a 10-year loan term. So the only difference is the, the loan term from 20 years to 10 years. And the, the staff report that was prepared call out only 10 years. So any question, I will be happy to answer.
Through the mayor.
Bring it back to the council.
Yes. Of course, this is the best-case scenario, better than we even thought we would get when we approved this in 2017. This is fantastic for replacing all of them instead of so many per year and, and using staff to do the replacement. But this is going to be a monumental task to get out there and do that. So for the public's knowledge, who is going to be doing this, since it's going to be more than really our staff can handle and the workers? So how's this going to get done?
Yeah. The next steps will be that we will be hiring a consultant to develop the project plans and specifications, which will be, which will go through a competitive bid process to hire a consultant, hire a contractor, and then we will specify a time, maybe three months or six months, for the contractor to swap the meter heads throughout the city. And that will also include about, we are looking at about swapping all the heads, which includes about 2,000 meter bodies itself, depending on how the meter bodies test itself. So, so now, with the, with the council authorization, staff will move forward to develop the project plans and specifications, and city, and the staff will return back to the council for, for authorization for competitive bids. And at that time, we will advertise the project for competitive bids and get the low responsible bidder. They'll make recommendation to award the contract, contract to that contractor, and, and that contractor will get the whole thing done. So we are hoping to get the full, entire project completed within, within, by, by the end of 2019.
So basically, it'll be freeing up our public work staff from having to do this, and they'll be able to handle all the back, you know, the backlog, you know, there's always something for them to do, as Diana has said in the past, there's more than enough to do. And so that'll free them up. Not only is it a savings in the long run and, and cost to the city and the citizens, it's going to make sure that our staff can continue doing other projects instead of being focused on this. So just wanted the public to know that this is actually turning out much better than we could have imagined, and we're very, I'm very pleased with that, so.
Through, through the mayor.
Thank you. Yes.
Just a couple of comments. Mandeeb, first, good work on this. Again, far better than what I think we had all anticipated previously. So your diligent effort on this is, is definitely noticed by this council. You know, the, the app part to this, I'm probably, we're going to have to probably take some time for a complaint from my neighbor, because his yard won't be getting a flood irrigation about two, three times a week if that app has alerts that certain people in my house might know that they left the water on out back. So that would be one of those helpful pieces. But also for the public, I just returned on Saturday from down in, in Tocati, Mexico, which is a border town. And in all of their lack of infrastructure, what they do have at every residence and, and where I was, are the kids that I had down there building homes, we're building about 10 miles south of Tocati proper, but it's still within the Tocati city limits. And it's a rather rural location. All of those homes have water meters on them, even, even down in, in that city. They don't have sewer, you know, at all, but, but they have water and it's metered. And as I was looking at, at the type of meters, it, it's not cellular-based, but they do have the radio ability to be able to read those. So it, it is the way that, not only here in the United States, not only in California, that's kind of the way of the world, that, that we have to go with the water usage and being able to manage it a little bit better.
Thank you for that comment. Any other comments?
Through the mayor. Hey, Mandeeb, I know the standard-issue meter for single-family dwellings is 1-inch. We have quite a few 3/4-inch meters out there throughout the years. When we do this transformation, will they be all upgraded to 1-inch? Are we still going to have 3/4 or 1-inch?
Correct. All, all, all of the meters, well, we are not going to change the meter sizes. We are, through this project, we are going to change the meter heads to cellular meter heads, and the meters that we are going to replace will be the meters of the same size, unless we need to change the meter size for any other reasons.
Okay. So the 3/4-inch meters that's been in the ground, they're, they're just going to change about, put another 3/4-inch meter in the ground?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I just wonder if it was all going to be the same in the future? I mean, everybody would be the same. I, that was my question. So we're still going to have 3/4-inch meters out there from, from our earlier days. Okay? And then, we're going to be making payments for 10 years, and at the end of 10 years, with this new system, are we going to be able to just, hopefully just change the meter heads out 10 years from now or not have to change the whole body and head out? Any, I'm, you know, you're guessing 10 years from now, but with, with technology, are they giving us good hopes that 10 years from now, it's just going to be the meter heads?
The meter heads, they, they provide us a meter head warranty, 100% replacement for the parts or the meter head for first 10 years. Then from 10 to 20 years, the warranty is a prorated basis. So for example, if the meter failed at, at 12th year, then we have to pay some portion price for the meter head, and that also makes sense.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, excuse me. I just wanted to expand on what Mandeeb was talking about with respect to the minor changes to the agreement. So what we're doing is, is we're approving the agreement that the state sent us just this past Friday, that was in response to our request that we, that we shortened the term from 20 to 10 years. So the changes include that Exhibit C that Mandeeb sent to the council, that's the payment schedule, and there were two other, other minor changes, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mandeeb. The cover page changes the, the term, the end of the term from 2039 to 2029. Then Exhibit B, number five, the term of the agreement is shortened from 2039 to 2029, reflecting the shortened 20 years to 10 years. I just want to get that on the record, because I'm going to have, I'm going to be asked to issue an opinion letter on this, so I want to make sure everything is absolutely correct. Would I state it correct, Mandeeb?
Is that?
Am I wrong?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, I'll move the, this item with the changes so stated by Tim Hayes.
Council member, we still have-
Oh, we have a card?
A card.
I'm sorry.
So before we move forward, we do have a speaker card from Dale McDowell.
Mayor Dibble, council members, my name's Dale McDowell, and I'd like to make a couple of comments about this meter change situation. These are figures that came from the staff report. It was stated it's going to be 8 million, and it's going to cost the city, going to be reimbursed 4 million. So we got 4.4, somewhere in that range. But the heads for 17,000 meters is $6,732, or $6,732. Complete for, I think it was 2,000 that we're going to need, and that's 1,990,000. Interest, I just made a guess, at 200,000. That comes up to a total of 8,922. So that's our share, 4 million, so that puts us almost at $5 million right there for our share. That's not even putting, putting anything in the ground yet. And I don't know whether it's going to be free installation. I mean, they're not going to charge the city anything for putting them in? I don't think so. But we're going to foot that bill also. And then a 10-year lifespan for the reader head, for the cellular head, 10 years, so at come that point, there's another $7,524,000 that we're going to be subject to. So he says 10 years, maybe it'll go 12. I mean, you don't really know how long it's going to go. But that's kind of what you have on the projection. So my comment on it, the city can't afford it. That's a total, that's a total cost of like $16 million in 10 years. It doesn't make any sense. Operate the meters we have now and continue on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.- Mandeeb, if you have any clarification other than that.
Okay. The, the cost estimate that is in the staff report of total 8 million dollars, that includes all installation, parts, and labor, complete project. So out of that, 8 million, 4 million is principal forgiveness, and we are only responsible paying for 4 million at low-interest loan. In 10 years, regardless, either we go with option one or option two, we will have to replace the meter heads no matter what. So, so that's unavoidable cost. Every 10 years, replace the meter heads, and we are hoping, based on discussion with the vendors who provide the meter heads, that they're improving, improving the technology, and the meter heads hopefully will last longer than 10 years. Anything else?
Okay. Thank you very much. Just wanted to make sure that we clarified that. And we'll bring it back to council for motion. Any further discussion?
So just, just so, I think so the public is aware, what, what's our, what's the current failure rate of our meter system that's out there?
So right now, the meters, of course, the technology improves over time. The meter heads that have been replaced, that have been, that have been installed 10 years ago, they're, right now, they're starting to fail. So today, as of today, we are only expecting 10 years' life, but based on the discussion with the vendors, and they're making some improvements to that, so hopefully they will, they're hoping that it will last longer than that. So let's say that if we have to replace the meter heads after 12 years, then we will not be paying the full price of the meter heads. It comes with a prorated warranty. And I have, for example-
Mandeeb, let me-
Yeah. Correct. Correct.
So if I understand the question correctly, you're asking how many meter heads have failed within the last few months? So within the last about six months, we've had 1,300 meter heads fail because the batteries have died. And so how do we find that? When we go out and do the meter reading, we don't get a reading. And so then our customer field reps go out and check the meters and find out that the batteries have died, and then our Public Works crews go out and replace those heads. So we're starting to see the die-off rate increase because the batteries have reached their useful life.
Through all of the iterations of meters, and, and I'm sure that Council Member Cardoza can probably weigh in on this also, is it, in the, in the past, it was flip a lid and read a number. That was, that was way back.
Right.
And then we went to a walking process where they would get out-
Touch read.
And do a touch read. And that was fairly well labor-intensive to be able to cover the entire city. As the city's grown, and we've gone into these other types of technology, we've reduced the need for personnel actually out there physically touching or, or moving about. They just drive down the road and pick up the readings.
Correct.
Moving forward into the cellular technology, there will be no more driving down the road to, to do these readings unless there's a failure.
Correct.
You know, seems pretty, seem, pretty straightforward on being able to, to provide a higher level of service, certainly with the app that's out there. You know, jokingly, I said about flooding in the neighbor's yard, but it certainly will help folks manage their water usage to a higher degree.
Correct. And we, and we do have some cellular meters in service today. New development, when they come in and pay for their water meter, they're getting a cellular meter. And then we've also had some customers come in and pay to request to upgrade their meter to cellular meter. And so with those customers, we've received positive feedback related to the ability for them to go online and see their usage.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just to follow up on that. So what we're talking about really replacing on the meters now would be just the meter itself, if it gives out, because there's replacement battery? Or is there a battery inside here also that would fail? What are you talking about now? Because I just undid this right off of the, the-
Rocket.
And, and so I mean, you're able to disconnect this now, and I see little batteries in there and circuitry and little blue light- and little blue light. So, which, what are they talking about? Failure?
Correct. The thing that you have in your hand is the one that
That keeps failing now that you have to replace the whole meter currently, but now, with this system, you'd check it out. If it's not this, you just replace this. Is that correct?
Correct. Right now, yeah, right now, we are looking to replace the heads, the thing that has the battery in it, not the meter body.
Okay, just the head.
Correct.
And that's with the new ones, correct?
Correct.
The old ones, it's the whole thing, correct?
No, the
Oh, it's still the same thing?
The meter body is going to stay the same. We are not going to do anything with the meter body.
And they're to last how many years?
Fifteen to twenty years.
Fifteen to twenty years. Because I know you were saying this earlier, and so, I was wanting to clarify that there is a difference between the fifteen, twenty year and the ten year.
Correct.
And this is prorated out to twenty?
Correct.
Okay.
And also, the meter bodies, the typical life is fifteen to twenty years.
They're lithium quality batteries?
Based on the discussion with the vendors, they have seen some meter bodies lasting twenty-five to thirty years.
Yeah.
So, we are hoping to see long life from the meter bodies itself.
Okay. Any other questions, comments while he fiddles with that?
You know, Stan, through
You got the two arrows there, and it's not wanting to go in.
Stan, Stan, through technology, the battery used to be on the head. Now, it's moved in, so all they have to use, that's all, through technology. Okay. You still wanna make your motion, sir?
Yes. My motion stands.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a
I don't want to go in. I don't wanna break it.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Play with the toy over there. Yeah. All right. We are on item number fifteen, the 2017 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, the SAFER Grant. We have Pete.
Well, Mayor Dibble, members of the City Council, thank you for having me tonight. It's been a long night, so I'll try and be brief. I do need to provide one point of clarification, especially since the police chief is here. So, based on our visitors we had earlier tonight, we'll be officially changing the name of our Uba City Fire Department versus Uba City Police Department Football Fundraiser to Uba City Fire Department slash California Highway Patrol versus Uba City Police Department. So, just wanna get that in while you can, make sure we can get CHP on, working our side, so. Sorry, I had to. It's first one up to the mic. So, with that, let's talk about SAFER Grant. What does SAFER stand for? It stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. SAFER Grant is funded through Homeland Security. It's a competitive process, involves career and volunteer fire agencies across the nation. I think it's really important to understand the goal of the SAFER Grant. The goal of the SAFER Grant, this is specifically out of the language of the grant and the guidance documents, is to assist departments to improve staffing levels to ensure they have adequate personnel to respond and safely perform at incident scenes, providing protection from fire and fire-related hazards in their community. That's the goal of the SAFER Grant. The purpose of the SAFER Grant is to assist fire departments, increase the number of firefighters, to help communities meet industry minimum standards, and attain twenty-four-hour staffing to provide adequate protection from fire and fire-related hazards, and to fulfill traditional missions of fire departments. We've been applying for the SAFER Grant for quite some time now. This isn't a new process for us. However, as these grants evolve, things change, especially with new administration. So, some of the key changes that have occurred in this grant versus previous grants that we've had through the SAFER program, is the hiring grant will pay for raises or increases to firefighter payer benefits in years two or three. That was a question that was posed, and the answer is no. So, let me give you an example. On our current SAFER Grant, we had certain thresholds we had to meet. We had to get people to, our firefighters to, from fire recruit to firefighter one, firefighter two, and that included merit increases that the city manager was referring to earlier. That was part of our grant, that was part of the condition of the grant, and they funded that. FEMA has gotten wise and said, we're not doing that anymore. We're not gonna fund merit increases. And so, basically, what you bring them in at is what level you keep them at, okay? And that's an important concept, because that's an important change to this grant. Another change to the grant is the current grant we have is a pretty darn good grant. It's 100% funded. So, for the last two years, I've been able to fund anywhere from six to nine personnel, thanks to FEMA, and they've covered the cost of the grant for us. This grant's different. This grant, they're asking for some matching funds, and this is nationwide, this isn't just to California. So, we are asking for nine full-time limited-term firefighters again. It is a three-year grant versus a two-year grant, which is nice, but the matches are different. The first-year match will be seventy-five percent. FEMA will pay seventy-five percent, and the city will be responsible for twenty-five percent. Year two is also seventy-five, twenty-five. Year three is where they kinda get you a little bit. It's thirty-five, sixty-five. They fund thirty-five percent, and the city has to fund sixty-five percent. So, when I looked at some of the guidance document changes, the one I just talked about, which was when you come in, that's where you fund at, and you stay at that level for three years. I looked at our, as you can see, there's a big difference between fire recruit wages. So, on your left, you got the pepper people, which are the new ones. On the right is your classic person, depending on who we bring into the organization. But as you look from fire recruit, we'll stick with the pepper on the left, which is easier. They come in at about eighty-one thousand for salaries and benefits, but a firefighter two is one hundred and twenty-four thousand five thirty-nine. So, if I bring someone in at fire recruit level on the SAFER Grant, they will stay at the eighty-one thousand three twenty-five per the guidance document for the three years. So, in some ways, it's nice because there's a savings, because if that, obviously, if that were to go up, we would have to, our costs would proportionally go up. So, in this case, it'll stay down because of their new guidance document. So, that kinda gives you an idea of what we're looking at as far as costs. So, that's the stat that I use. I went off the fire recruit level pay. So, as you can see, and these numbers are a little small, I apologize, but basically, for the first year, the city's gonna fund one eighty-six, one hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred, and the grant funds five hundred and fifty-nine thousand. The same thing for the second year. The third year, the city will be responsible for roughly four hundred and eighty-four thousand, and FEMA would pay two hundred and sixty-one thousand. So, over the life of the three-year grant, we're looking at about a city contribution of about eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand roughly, and a FEMA grant match of about 1.3, 1.4 million. So, it's a pretty good bang for the buck for nine firefighters for three years. So, one of the things I tried to work with on the finance director was some offsetting some savings. How can we save some money to lower our contribution? This is my recommendation. My recommendation, the reason I'm asking for nine is I'm asking to overstaff by one person on each shift. So, in 2017, I'll give you a quick example. We had about a hundred and seventy-eight shifts, which would be, a shift is a twenty-four-hour period. So, we had a hundred and seventy-eight shifts of firefighter and fire apparatus operator overtime that had to be covered either due to vacation, sick leave, strike team assignments on wildland fires, that type of stuff. So, I kinda took that number, that's in 2017, of a hundred and seventy-eight shifts. For me to backfill those shifts, which I did, it cost me approximately five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in overtime. So, what I would recommend that we do is if we overstaff with nine SAFER people instead of just six, I'd have an extra person on each shift, and then the first person that's off duty, a firefighter or equipment operator, we wouldn't backfill it with overtime. We would take that person, the extra body that we'd have on another engine, and shift them over to fill wherever that vacancy is, saving us a hundred and seventy-eight shifts of overtime on average, if that were to occur again the next fiscal year. So, approximately five hundred and sixty-seven thousand could be saved. So, now, we've dropped some of our costs from the eight hundred thousand dollar range, probably more into more likely the three fifty or four fifty range. And the reason I put that in there is I'll come back if we're awarded the grant. First, if you approve it tonight to apply, if we're awarded the grant, I'll come back, because the devil's always in the details, and provide very specific numbers on a very much exact cost. I just kinda wanna give you a ballpark figure for tonight, because there's other incidental things we have to do, and we have to get turnouts and uniforms, and all that costs money. So, that would be some other costs that I'd have to make sure I share with you. So, that's where I kinda fudged a little bit and said, on the high side, four fifty, on the low side, three fifty. So, hopefully, that makes some sense. So, I'm before you tonight to ask your permission to move forward and apply for the SAFER Grant for the next three years, knowing that there are some cost matches that need to occur that I shared with you. So, my recommendation is to authorize the fire department to submit an application to the Department of Homeland Security for consideration of funding under the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, known as the SAFER Grant, for the hiring of nine limited-term firefighters. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for?
Through the mayor. I know that the recruit is, of course, the lowest entry level that you have. Did you do any research on whether, what the cost would be for the firefighter one overall cost, if you were to do that and hold that for three years?
I have not done that yet, but I can, as you can tell from here, there's about a seven thousand annual, seven to eight thousand dollar annual difference between fire recruit and firefighter one.
Eight times nine is what the difference would be?
Seven-two thousand times three.
Right.
And if they go to, if I were to bring on firefighter twos, it's quite a big difference. So. Does that answer your question, sir?
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
So, I mean, so Chief, probably just a few things. Your analysis on being able to bring them in, that would be, I think, to really see what their real flow would look like, and what the real savings might off of last year would be helpful, to be able to see that on a go-forward basis.
Okay.
Because I believe that the numbers are probably fairly close, but I'd like to see where some of your mandatory staffing is at certain levels and things like that for, if they're gonna be gone on vacation and things like that.
Okay.
So, that would be helpful to be able to see that. And seeing that you're in a negotiating mood, I'd like to see the Green Bay picture completely removed from all future presentations made by the fire department. And you
Wasn't Dallas.
And I would agree, I would agree that you get all the CHP officers on your team, with the exception, Uba City gets Captain Ellison.
Oh, okay. Well, that was what I was striving for, so. Thank you, sir.
With that, do we have a motion?
Couple of questions, if I may.
Yeah.
Chief, have you getting any concern or thought to these folks coming in, these nine, and they get trained for a year, maybe two, and then disappear to places elsewhere than Uba City being, we're paying recruit wages?
So, let me give you our track record. So, I can tell you that, first of all, when I go through recruitment process, I usually don't have any challenges with people applying to be firefighters. I usually get in the hundreds of people applying. Through a whittling-down process, we try and pick all the A students, obviously, and get the best of the best. Of this SAFER Grant, I'll just give you an example. We were, there's a lot of benefits to the SAFER Grant, because it gives us a longer period of time to look at firefighters to see if they work for us or not. And in all honesty, does a candidate or the firefighter feel that we work for them? It also provides an opportunity to, let me back up a second. So, to get back to answer to your question, when we started the SAFER Grant, I hired nine people. One of them went back down to Southern California, was offered a full-time job while on the grant, so I can't blame that person for going. So, is there a chance that people can leave? Yes. But I can also tell you, the other eight of the nine, we hired full-time. Not a bad track record. Then, we backfilled it with another seven. Of that seven, one of them went to the Bay Area to a full-time job, was on a grant, can't blame him for leaving for, on a grant to a full-time job. Of the six remaining I have, I'd say the odds are very good, I'm gonna, not very good, unless for some reason they don't perform well between now and then when the grant ends, I'll be picking up another four out of the six. So, just through attrition and other things, we've been pretty successful on picking people up full-time, and they've been sticking around. So, the program's been very successful for us, and I haven't had an issue with people leaving because of recruit wages. I just haven't had that situation. Is it a possibility? Yes. But has it happened to me yet? Not really. Would I like to bring them in at firefighter two wages? Yeah, that'd be great. But I'm looking at what the federal government changed the guidance documents. So, we've always hired at fire recruit level. It's very rare that we've brought someone in at a firefighter one or two level. In fact, thirty years I've been here, I can't think of who've done that. We've brought, just in the last couple of years, we brought in lateral engineers or FAOs, but not firefighter one or twos.
And they're, I know law enforcement agencies sometimes do this. If folks come in, they're obligated to stay for a certain amount of time before they consider employment elsewhere. Is there being any consideration given to that in this situation?
I don't think I can do that.
I don't think so.
If they, to be honest with you, if a person has an ability to get a full-time position somewhere who's working for us on a grant, we look at that as a positive thing, not a negative thing, and they can, you know, they take that full-time position.
By full-time, you mean permanent?
Permanent position, yes. I'm sorry, yeah. Full-time, I mean permanent.
All right. And then, the folks that are extra bodies, if, say, someone does not come in sick, or call in sick or vacation, whatnot, what is their plan for them with their, they don't have a vacant spot to fill?
So, what I, the other, let's take the example, 2017. So, I have a hundred and seventy-eight days that someone, that a firefighter or engineer is off duty, that that person who's, will probably be stationed at station one, I have a two-person company, that'll be a three-person company. So, which is a good thing, right? We wanna get as many three-person companies as we can. But what will happen is that person will go to fill in whatever spot. On the other eight, one hundred and eighty-seven days that someone's not off on vacation or sick leave, that person, there'll be extra staffing on that engine, and that'll benefit as far as, it benefits as far as call volume and simultaneous calls and meeting our NFPA standards that we try and meet.
Then, and just one more thing, thank you for bearing with me.
No, you're okay.
These folks that come on, these nine, they're fully aware that this is a recruit-level wage for the entire three years.
They will be, yes. They'll be fully aware that's a recruit wage for three years.
Getting into.
Yeah. We just found out within the last thirty days when the guidance documents came out.
All right. And they may or may not be hired, depends on how things work out in three years from now, but they're fully aware of that when they sign the line.
They're fully aware. So, what happens is when they come on board, first of all, I have my certification list. We got it done early. We got our recruitments done, so they're ready to go. We've made, we're making contact with them, letting them know that we'll probably hear in August or September, and if we're successful getting the grant, then we'll hold chief's interviews, and then they'll be hired, knowing that they're limited-term full-time for three years, and they'll know what wages they get, they'll get coming in. And I'm just not having a problem with recruiting, and it's a pretty good deal to get not only salary, but wages and benefits as well.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, just keyed in on one thing here. One of the set of comments you made, I know this last SAFER Grant, we had some significant retirements and moving, and so, you were able to utilize many of the SAFER Grant participants and employees to go into permanent positions, which was fantastic, because I know that you have a really good crew right now on that. And in this process, you plan on trying to utilize as many of the best, I guess, of the best of these groups, to bring them on as attrition and retirements and different things that you can bring them on permanently. And to do that, I guess the recruits would have to be going through classes, school, education stuff. What kind of education benefits, or what are we gonna give them through the process? Since it's not provided within the granting, would Uba City be extending some way to incentive for them to get schooling to advance up for that possibility?
So, we haven't got too far down that road yet, but what I would recommend is we're always gonna offer, we're gonna treat our, just like when our grant people came on, we treat them just like full-time permanent fire recruits, and we're gonna get them through the programs, through their manuals, through their firefighter one program, their firefighter two program. We're gonna do the same with these new recruits coming on. If they wanna go through those programs, and usually, they want to, because they're state certifications, so even if they don't stay, then they have some certifications to move on with. But we're gonna do the best, we're always really good about training people and getting to a level, the highest level that we can, to help them be successful. So, training is usually not an issue, at least for me in the department. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Answers a couple of concerns I had.
If there are not any questions, we don't have any cards, so do we have a motion?
I'd move the item.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Thank you. Next, we have the Feather River Mill Hotel Incentive. Darren Gell.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Darren Gell, your Economic Growth and Public Affairs Manager. Tonight, it's a pleasure to be before you to talk about a couple economic development projects, but one in specific as it relates to our Feather River Mills site. As you know, for a number of years, the city has worked to see the Feather River Mills site developed. This is the site. It's Butts Bridge Street and Shasta and Bee. We have our developer here, Mehmet Noyan, who, we have a DDA, Development We have our developer here, Mehmet Noyan, who the, we have a DDA, a development agreement with, and he's moving forward with making sure that he closes on, on the project by the date certain in, in June. One of the key projects of this is a hotel. Over the past probably seven years, Mr. Noyan and myself have toured well over a dozen developers, contractors, and hotel operators on this site. We believe that a hotel would be a great benefit to our downtown core, to our downtown specific plan, and also to, to move forward with the redevelopment that's occurred within this area. And we're very excited tonight that we have Lotus Management, we have Prakash Patel, I'm here this evening, who is the hotel developer and, and operator. As, as we toured this facility, as we toured this property with a number of developers, one of them that we were able to work with is one that works in rural communities, that understands rural communities. And Mr. Patel identified the site and said, hey, Uba City is a great place, but in order for it to work here, we need to, we need to see an incentive. As we identified and looked at incentives for hotels, there's a variety of them that occur across the state. And one of the first things we did is we hired NHA advisors. Craig Kill's here with us this evening, and he had the ability for Mr. Patel to provide all of his financial documents to NHA advisors, so that he could review them and say, okay, there is a need, and that the return on investment is such that he believes that, that the proposal that we have for an incentive is, is appropriate. Let me talk a little bit about what we're proposing as it relates, hotels, wherever you go, charge transient occupancy tax. Wanted to back up for a second, which is called TOT. In the city of Uba City, we have a 10% TOT. Most communities are about in 10%. On top of that, there's other assessments. We have an additional 2% that occurs here locally, that's for a tourism management group, and that is self-assessed by, by the hotels. To incentivize this project, we wanted to do a couple of things. Number one, we want to see the project developed as quickly as possible. And, and two, we want to make sure it's successful. The way to, to incentivize timely development was first to put a date and allow the hotel operator to receive a TOT rebate for operations of his facility for his entire first year. However, that year would start January 1 of 2020. If he started earlier, of course, then it would only be a year from, from the day they start. But talking with both Mr. Noyan and Mr. Patel, I believe this is the earliest that, that they could open up, and that's basically starting tomorrow. And Mr. Patel has already signed this agreement and has said, he hopes within eight to, to 10 or 12 weeks that he would have plans before the city to, to move forward with, with a building permit for this project. The second one is beyond that first year, an incentive of not to exceed 600,000, and they would see a reimbursement of their transient occupancy tax over a seven-year period. So, again, that would not exceed 600,000 over a seven-year period. What, what would this look like on an annual basis? These are calculations that I came up with personally, based upon the knowledge that I have of our local hotels, our market, average daily room rates and occupancies. So, on, on the left is the total TOT that would be collected on an annual basis over 10 years, so a total of almost 2.6 million. The second column is what the reimbursement that we'd be providing of a tax back for an operational incentives to a Uba City Hotel LP, which is Mr. Patel's, so that's 750,000. That is an estimate. I would tell you, the first year could be more, could be less, but based upon a lot of discussions, I'm, I'm being, I'm making that number higher than what I expected it to be, because I'd rather come back to you and say, you know, hey, it ended up only being 700,000, not 800,000. And then finally, on the right, is the total tax that the city would receive through the operations of this hotel. Like I said, based on a very conservative number, in my opinion, as it relates to, to the hotel operations. This proposal was actually presented to your Economic Development Commission, and this evening I have Christine Ivory, who represents our ag sector on our Economic Development Commission, and I briefly wanted her to speak. They did come out and support this, but she, she was here to represent the Economic Development Commission, so I'll turn it over to Christine.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As Darren said, my name is Christine Ivory, and I'm on your Economic Development Commission. And we recently met to discuss several things on this proposed incentive. I will keep this very brief. The Economic Development Commission recommends the council approve the hotel operational transient occupancy tax incentive. Any questions, we will leave to Darren. Thank you.
Yeah, that was brief.
Yeah, talk to Barry.
When it comes to ag, she's long-winded, but I guess this one is different.
I'm teasing. I'd gladly answer any of them.
So, so that is the incentive that's been proposed to you. I do, if, if the council wouldn't mind, I'd like to talk about a second hotel project. And actually, let me, let me step back first. The hotel that's being proposed is a Holiday Inn Express of 93 rooms on, on the site. And actually, let me show for, for the people that are here, the site of the hotel is proposed in this corner. So, 93 rooms. Currently, the Hampton Inn, I called there again today, they were booked, but if I wanted to, I'd use next week, it was almost $200 a room night. And if I traveled down to Natomas or Roseville, I was $40 to $50 less. So, so there's, we definitely know there's a need. Second, we have Mr. Gill and his partners and father, and they'll come up and speak a little bit about their project. In the staff report, I mentioned of not offering incentive for this project. I've spoken with Mr. Gill. What I'd recommend to the council is that we sit down and meet with Mr. Gill and have him turn his financial documents over to Mr. Hill to review those, and then we will come back to the council as quickly as possible to bring back a proposed incentive for, for Mr. Gill and, and his projects. So, this time, I can answer any questions the council might have. And like I said, I do know that we have a couple of speakers that would like to speak on this item.
Thank you, Darren. Any questions for Darren?
So, we are going through the process of approving the first hotel or going forward? Or is this both in, okay.
Yeah, so, so tonight, the recommendation is to move forward with the existing incentive for Uba City LP, which is Mr. Patel's hotel, on the Feather River Mills site separately. We, we will be going back, unless you direct otherwise, to meet with Mr. Gill on his project and his hotel, and we'll come back at maybe as quickly as may. It'll just depend on how long it takes to get the documents over to Mr. Hill for him to review their financial documents and work out, identify the need for his project, so.
Okay, thank you. Since there's not any questions, we do have a speaker card from Simon Gill. So, Simon, if you would like to come up to the podium. If you can state your name and your residence, please.
Hello, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Simon Gill, a 30-year resident of Uba City. We are owner, operators, and developers of the subways in the local area. The local area. We employ about 65 employees in this community. We have generated with our staff and the community, well over a million dollars has been put back into this community. We have, our last project was actually on Pluma Street and Bridge Street, which I thought was a phenomenal project, which was the gateway to downtown. And that was done with the help of Planning Commission and coming up with all the style, the facade, and we agreed to everything, and we had no parking there, but we do very well there. Can't complain. So now, my goal for the last 10 years was to bring another hotel to this area. And I looked around at many different sites, and finally, we looked at downtown, we looked at New Hall and Tractor, and it was just a penciling game, and we got a reasonable value out of the Woodward Street. And what we plan on bringing there is a Spring Hill Suites Marriott, and it's an upper-scale hotel, which is going to be all suites. It's going to have a convention center, kitchenette. We do have a lot of, I guess, barriers, you could say, or restrictions, kind of. We are leasing some property from Caltrans. We will be obligated to make a right-hand turn into the property to ease the traffic. We are redeveloping Woodward Street itself with water, sewer, curbs, gutters, which is actually a public street that should be serviced by the city, but we had agreed to that. It is a business risk. We are going to be part of the Civic Center Boulevard redevelopment, so we will be contributing to that as well. And I just think it's a, I got this great opportunity to put back into the city, and I'm just looking for some kind of an incentive also, and if it's possible to just be kind of a level playing field, I guess. I don't know what the right choice of words over here are. But my point is that when a person goes on vacation, any of us go out, we usually book our rooms in advance. It's not like a cup of coffee, a bottle of water, or gas. We don't, it's not an impulse purchase. So, with that saying that, when we, when people come to this town, they already know if they're going to stay at the Mayor, they're staying at the Holiday Express. I don't think a location is going to change a person's mind. We do have a little bit of brand loyalty. So, with that said, I'm just looking for a little parity on this project.
And, yeah, through the mayor. Simon, I don't want to embarrass the, you know, the applicant on this at all, but the need for a conference center is, is fairly large in our area by demand. Am I correct?
I see the demand very large, yes.
And your proposed project, how, how big would your conference center be?
I'd say it's about, about 400 to 450 people.
And what would be the optimum site, you know, size for, for our area, given the, the different demands that we have?
I'd say over 600.
So, one of the things I look at, and, and again, I don't want to embarrass Simon at all, but he was at an event in Sacramento Saturday, along with many other members of our community, because there really isn't the availability here, you know, for, for the size of event that they were at. And coming home out on Highway 99, be just to the north of, of Lincoln Road, he and his family were hit from behind and put his vehicle into the ditch on the east side of the, of the road, and I don't mean gently. You know, we're, we're blessed that, that you weren't hurt to a greater degree. He's walking a little gingerly today, but, you know, it, the more we can build in our community, the more that, that will be, our, our community, we use it, we'll have people. Brand loyalty is certainly there for both of these products. Folks will be coming in. There is a need, and I know that there's a concern, you know, that all of a sudden, about 200 rooms are going to pop up in, in Uba City. But I will tell you that, that over time, those, those products, both of these products will have a good occupancy rate, just given our area and, and the different events that can go on, especially with, with a convention center. So, I would be, I personally would be interested in talking about incentives if we can get you to a larger convention center and, and have something on a little, little larger scale that would fit the needs of, of our community.
That'd be very well interested. I just want to say, working with you guys, the city, Steve Kroger, Darren Gill, Arnaldo, it seems like every time we could run into something, but we improve the project so much more, the exterior of it, the elevations, everything, has increased the costs potentially. But I think at the end of the day, I think it's going to be wonderful once we all get together and we make it work.
Any other comments?
Simon, if to build that conference from 400 people to 650 people, is the lot big enough to accommodate that?
I will have to purchase the two homes that you see right there.
They're in the corner, okay.
In the corner, yes.
Thank you, Simon.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I, I'm going to make a comment. Simon, it was a pleasure to talk to you this afternoon on the phone, and what I just want to say is that your willingness to always continue to improve just by taking suggestions and being open to it, and, and I understand it's very costly, but your commitment to the community has been very positive. And just talking to you for the first time this afternoon, I just want to say that your openness to do any improvements, are grateful and will do well in this community. On top of that, talking about the incentives this afternoon, I just want to say that because those, that criteria and the guideline was put into place by the city, I believe, 2011, so I, I personally would like for us as a city to sit down with you and look at those incentives for you, since those guidelines and criteria were already set in place, and I think the equal value and the fairness should be at least considered.
Appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
Okay. I don't have any other cards, so we'll bring it back for questions of staff from council or a motion.
Just a real quick comment here. I know that having been involved a little bit with the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development, different groups in the community, that they have tried to attract different tournaments, different events, and it, every single time, it comes back to where there were not enough rooms to be able to hold any sort of a tournament or event for any of the events that they wanted to bring in. There were not enough rooms in the, you know, they included over Marysville, and so, you know, this will, while there, it's a big jump in a short period of time, I can tell you that the events that have been planned in the past and tried to get, they will be sought after again, and we'll get those rooms filled up with some of these tournaments and some times, and so now we're, we're finally moving on to the next stage, which was getting the rooms that we needed. I'd heard that said for the last 12 years. So, it's, we're finally taking that next step. It's a little risky sometimes, but it will happen and be good for the community and the business. With that, I'll make a motion, I gotta go back to it, to approve. Okay, sorry. I accidentally went on to another one here.
I've got it right here.
To authorize a city manager to execute agreement with the Uba City Hotel LP to incentivize operation of a Holiday Inn Express in the former Feather River Mill project, as recommended by the Uba City Economic Development Commission.
We have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Well, is there going to be a Part B on this, or is that going to be another?
That's just.
That was discussion.
Okay, no problem.
We'll bring it back to the next.
Okay.
Future councilman.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
So, next I get to put on the public affairs hat, or do we need to take a break?
Okay, so our next is Business from City Council, which is our Senate Bill 54, California Values Act.
Correct. So, very briefly, in October 5th of 2017, Governor Brown signed SB 54 into law. That law is, is known as the Sexuary State Bill, and it came into effect on January 1st. This law places limits on how state and local law enforcement agencies can cooperate with federal immigration authorities. Recently, a couple cities, one city actually opt, opted out of that law. Other cities have passed resolutions, and some have joined in on a lawsuit related to, to that, to this piece of legislation. This evening, this is an opportunity for the council to have a discussion on SB 54. I do know that you have a number of speaker cards, so if you want to handle those first and then go into your discussion, but if you have any other questions, I can answer them. And tonight, we're looking for council's direction on what you would like us to do as it relates to this SB 54.
Great, thank you. What we'll do is we'll go ahead and allow those that have filled out the speaker cards to go ahead and speak, so that we can hear their, their. to go ahead and speak so that we can hear their, their concerns, issues. We have Pat Miller.
Okay, I'm going to be real short. I just wanted to let you folks know that the National Sheriffs Association, which represents all of California's elected county sheriffs, has filed a friend of the court, has filed as a friend of the court in, in the federal lawsuit against California. The filing states that a judge should rule in favor of the federal government and overturn the state immigration laws that endanger officers and public safety. I urge you to withdraw Yuba City from California Sanctuary State and join the federal lawsuit. We need to assure that our local police can cooperate with immigration officials without a court order to protect our citizens and law enforcement officials.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Next, we have Teri Thompson.
I would like to, for you people to vote against this is one of my main things. The other thing is, the people of California are suffering from a tyrannical state of government, which failed to provide a republican form of governancy, enables and supports across this southern border the invasion of the United States of America by illegal foreign nationals and protects vicious criminals who commit outrageous acts of criminal and violence upon the citizens of America, all caused by a government of and for a mono-party system led by a tyrannical dictator. This, I'd like to make a quote. This is from the United States Constitution, Article 4, Section 4 states. "The United States shall guarantee every state in the Union a republican form of government and shall protect each of them against invasion and on application of the legislator or of the executive, when the legislator cannot be convened, against domestic violence." So I wish you to try to get this, and let's go with the state or the United States Constitution and not the Constitution of California and the government that is actually a dictator. He is ruining this state. This is a wonderful state. Let's get our country back. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. Next, we have Carla Ferga. It's okay, take your time.
Hi, my name's Carla Ferga and I'm with the New California State Movement. We're losing, a lot of our friends and family have left the state already. We're almost out of here. And part of the reason is that California has become a dictatorship. It is a mono-party system. The top two primary has ruined our elections. This next governor we have is probably going to be just as bad or worse as the one we have now. So I'm urging that we join the federal lawsuit and send a message, because I really believe that this governor and the Attorney General are going to be arrested on treason charges and sedition. So let's send a message that Yuba City stands with the federal government and the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Next, we have Lloyd Linkton.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. You know, I had some prepared remarks here, but I can see the way that, that this is going. I think I'm just going to thank you all for your service. I appreciate the, the work that you put into this city. And I'm, I'm agreeing that we should do whatever we can to fight the Sanctuary State measure. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Lloyd. All right. Are you going up? I'm out of cards.
I'm with Lloyd. What has been said previously is absolutely true. We have to obey the Constitution. We have borders and they're not being practiced. And allowing the Sanctuary State tells people the laws don't count. I see two prior officers sitting right there. You know better. We have to obey laws. Otherwise, we're just going to end up being turned over and no civilization. So please, join the cities that are opposing SB 54. Thank you.
Thank you, Lane. I don't have any other cards. Anybody else want to speak? Okay, we'll bring it back to council for further discussion.
Through, through the mayor.
Hi. I'm Steph Resino. And I sat through a long meeting just to get to this part. And since everyone said what I thought, I'll just go ditto. Just had two experiences. I was in New Orleans for a couple of months and I've seen what the deterioration of laws can do. Please stand for the law, stand for the Constitution, because ultimately, we're Americans. You know, we're not subjects of California. We're citizens of the United States. So please get some courage and go with the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. All right. Is that it? Okay, now we'll bring it back to council for further discussion.
Through the mayor. I, I think in the course of time, as sanctuary cities, sanctuary states have, or we're the only real sanctuary state, Washington has made an attempt at it. We need to look and be prepared as, as a city for what will be coming down the pipe, really, with, with where some of these, and especially this Senate bill, went in the governor's signature. But just so I can kind of summarize this, for those that don't know what, what this really entails, because I, I get in debates with a number of different folks, especially after having the Appeal Democrat print comments from our local area. And I was one of those that was quoted in there. "What this bill does is prohibit state and local law enforcement from holding illegal aliens on the basis of federal immigration detainers or transferring them into federal custody unless they've been convicted in the last 15 years for one of the listed 31 crimes or are a registered sex offender. If not, they may only be held with a warrant from a federal judge." It also prohibits state and local law enforcement from asking anyone about their immigration status. And it prohibits the state and local law enforcement from sharing any information with federal immigration authorities that is not available to the general public. Prohibits the state and local law enforcement from using any of their money or personnel to investigate, interrogate, detain, detect, or arrest persons for immigration enforcement purposes. Prohibits state and local law enforcement from allowing federal immigration authorities to use space in their facilities. That's almost specifically talking about jails. Limits how and when state and local law enforcement, law enforcement can contact with federal immigration authorities. Grants discretion to state and local enforcement to cooperate even less with federal immigration authorities than the bill authorizes them to, but not more. In near universal recognition, or recognized and described in both its supporters and opponents as a Sanctuary State bill, protects illegal aliens at the expense of citizens, will increase illegal immigration to California, and sends the message that illegal aliens are welcome everywhere in the state. The dilemma, and, and some of you have said, get the courage. I don't think that, I personally lack the courage to say what I believe about this. I certainly have spoke out against the mayor of Oakland in her courage to stand behind this and to warn people that have been previously convicted of crimes that ICE was coming to the community to do raids. I find that to be an act against her oath of office. The oath of office that we take says that we solemnly swear, or those that don't like swearing, to affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And it goes on. It continues to reiterate the United States and the state of California. I've taken this oath numerous times in different positions as a law enforcement officer and certainly as an elected official. I hold to the values of that oath. And I believe that as I defend this and we speak out, or I speak out on this issue, that we need to continue to hold the values of that oath close to us. Unfortunately, it puts us into a position of where the, the federal government is saying one thing and the state government is saying something else. But what we can do as a local government is certainly to pass a resolution that puts us in opposition to the actions signed by the governor of this state. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Yes.
Concur with everything Councilman Buckland just said. These laws, everything is so new now. Maybe you have differences of opinion, federal saying one thing, many folks in the state saying another, cities, some of them stepping out, saying another. But I tell you, in principle, personally completely disagree with this SB 54. It's, it puts law enforcement and our public at greater risk. It doesn't help anybody, or in my opinion, anything, except the folks that are here illegally. One comment was made about an invasion from our southern border. I want to be clear, this is not a racial issue. You, you, you need to be here. Immigration, it's what America is built upon, especially California. And we're even proud of our diversity here in Yuba City. And I, I say, welcome, just do it legally. Just do it legally. And it's also to circumvent this circumstance, this, this thing. I think it's a slap in the face and affront to the folks who did take the time and go through that process and stand in line and be here legally. And we need to stand up. And I, I think at the time, maybe an ordinance is a little premature, but a resolution, I think, is very appropriate at this time for, for us to publicly declare as a council and as a city, as us as a policymaking body, that we do not believe in this, we do not support it. We do not want to put our law enforcement and our public in jeopardy. Again, welcome, but do it legally.
Exactly. Any other comments? Any other comments?
Through the mayor. I did a little study on a couple of opinions from the Supreme Court, because somebody had put something in the paper, an opinion based upon an Antonin Scalia 1997 ruling or opinion that the fed, it was a federal in this, in this, I think it was Arizona, Montana, and one or two other states that were implementing certain regulations without state's, I mean, the federal government's permission. And the federal government, and it had to do with background checks for getting guns and firearms. The federal government was in the process of developing some standards and stuff and some recommendations in the study. And these states went ahead and implemented what they wanted themselves. Well, in that case, the states won, because it was, the federal government was already developing and it would be eventually superseded by the federal government. But then in 2012, Arizona versus United States, Anthony Kennedy, Supreme Court Justice, put an opinion out based upon this issue specifically, having to do with immigration. And Arizona had implemented some, where you could go and it says, you pulled them over, you could, if they looked like they were a foreigner or whatever, you can ask them for their paperwork to prove that they're a US citizen. And the Supreme, you know, the USA prevailed on that, because they were putting immigration, creating their own immigration law when they have no right to do that as a state. That is specifically the right of the federal government to do for immigration. That's one of the things you agree upon when you become a state of the United States of America. That's part of the charter that you accept. And they were fully in violation of that. I only looked up for that just to find out if there were cases of that type of decision made, you know, and this is 2012. So if you hear any others trying to say something other than that's, especially the Antonin Scalia one, you now have one is Arizona versus United States in 2012 that actually upholds the federal government's immigration law as being the supreme law of the land on that, on those issues. So I think that we need to go with a resolution opposing the signature and the Sanctuary State 54. I think it's in the, in the long run that the leaders of our, of the state of California will fail, because there is actually Supreme Court case law that actually supports the federal sovereignty on those decisions. So I think we should stand opposed.
And through the mayor, just one additional comment. I referred to going down to Mexico with high school kids to build homes. Let me share with you what that looks like when you go south across a border. Every person that crosses the southern border into Mexico has to have a passport or a Western Hemisphere Travel Initiative card, which is the same, it's just a passport card, but it's just a cheaper way to, to get it. They have to fill out documents. Each person has to fill out documents to obtain a visa for seven days. That's all you're allowed to enter Mexico with as a, as a United States citizen. So when we look at our return north, the same requirement is made of us as US citizens, is we have to show our documents that we are coming back across the border. They notify Mexico upon our exit that, that those visas have been terminated and we move, you know, back into California. The point I'm making is that Mexico has its rules. Mexico has, and this isn't all about Mexico. Mexico is trying to secure its southern border also from some of the movement that is coming up out of Central America and South America. So they're, they're doing a lot of things, but they also, I think we over, sometimes simplify the process. process. It, yeah, we have a border issue. Is there a fence there? Yeah, there is. Are there border patrol agents working all that area? Absolutely. Are there assurances that those that are going in and those that are coming out are doing so legally? Absolutely. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about people that have come here, that have overstayed their legal term here, they've committed crimes, they've committed heinous crimes in a lot of cases, and it's not those that are just simply here as illegal, they can be dealt with. It's giving, outside of those 31 described crimes or being a registered sex offender, you know, there's a, the penal code is full of felonies besides 31 and far more than 31 violent crimes that can be committed in the State of California. So with all of that, you know, there are laws, we need to abide by those. We do, as law-abiding citizens, we do that when those that come in and take the oath, as we all go to it, to the swearing-in ceremonies for new citizens, it's an amazing process to see that some of those folks have been in that process for 12 years and finally gained their citizenship, and God bless them for making that choice to become a United States citizen and going through those efforts.
If you're a council member, I'm just gonna make a comment along since John just said that. My parents immigrated 50 years ago, and I remember as a teenager, standing with my mom when she took the oath to become a US citizen. I was a teenager, and I believe that office at that time was in Sacramento on L Street. That was so long ago that I believe it was L Street. And I remember that occasion, sitting there, she was a nervous wreck, she doesn't speak English, but she was studying that history to make sure that she can answer and say that oath with confidence, and my mom studied day and night. And that moment when she became that US citizen was the proudest moment. And we have the actual certificate, she keeps it, it's in a safe box, that's her whole world. And you know, my dad was actually, became a US citizen much earlier, so I don't even remember his, but I vividly remember hers, and it is a very, very proud moment. And then, you know what, the next step, she was so excited to go and vote. So that's, that's the pride that we hold, and to be here legally, do the work that you need to do, the hard work that becomes behind it, and then teaching all of the young kids to follow through and hold that pride of the work that we all do to be here, and we should hold that, you know, with our chin up, and we are going to fight and protect the US Constitution. We all take the oath, I've taken it several times as well for different positions that we hold, and obviously as an elected official as well, but just at work, I mean, we sign these things all the time. It's so important, and I will continue to stand by that and protect and serve, and I believe the resolution, we should move forward. I'm in opposition of 54 as well.
I'll just be, I'll just be short and sweet because there's no need to repeat. I'm on the same page with the rest of the council to make the resolution. And while I'm here, I'd like to make the motion to make the resolution for...
Okay.
Yes, give direction, excuse me, staff's direction to make the resolution. Thank you.
So, Mr. Hayes, do we need a resolution?
No, we don't, we don't need a resolution. We received direction from council, we'll be coming back with a resolution opposing SPE 54.
Thank you.
Okay, there you go.
Perfect.
Okay, I think that, then we're done with that one, right? No, we've given staff direction to do so. Okay, well, we are now on city council reports, so we will start with Councilmember Buckland.
Where's everybody going? Oh, you have a paper to print now. I don't know what it was, a week and a half ago, had the opportunity to be out on Williams Way with our police department in an effort led by our chief of police, former chief of police, Richard Dasher also, a lot of retirees that were out there, other council members, fire department, and family members of Glenn Harvey Williams, who was killed or died as a result of being shot while on duty in Uba City back in 1962. It was a remarkable event. For those of you that haven't been by there to take a look at it, there's a new sign for Williams Way at Gray Avenue, and it is the thin blue line through the Williams Way sign. It's a remarkable, I mean, just, it's a remarkable piece to honor somebody that died in service to this community so many years ago. But there's one thing that we never do as law enforcement, is that is to never forget those that have served and died, and we do that here in the State of California, down at the Capitol, on an annual basis, and do it very regularly back at the National Police Memorial in Washington DC. And when I'm in Washington DC again next week, I will simply make a sketching on the wall of Glenn Williams, and, because I can walk right to it, and many friends that I know that also died in the line of service, I go by and visit their names, and it's just an honor that we have that in this town, and I thank the chief of police for seeing that move forward, and also the medals that were given to the family members. I think that that is something that they know they're part of a family that won't be going away at any time. Also attended yesterday, the Government Relations and Public Affairs Committee meeting down at SACOG. I won't bore you with all of the details because we just simply went through some business, but one of the things that we're looking at is being able to utilize some buying power for government out of Texas, and so we're gonna be utilizing a program out there, no cost to this city or jurisdictions in our region, we're simply build a buy-in with the buying power of, yeah, of the Houston program, so we're gonna be tagging onto that whenever we can, and that's, there's an array of things that we can purchase through that for city operations, so we'll be bringing that back to staff for their review and see what they can do through that.
Great, and next we have Councilmember Kirk Doza.
All right, it's getting late, so I'll be quick about this. It's been a busy three weeks, so I'm gonna start off with meetings. I attended the By County Homeless Service Program, JPA, the Homeless Consortium meeting, Economic Development Commission, the Planning Commission, attended the Highway 20 Gateway Streetscape Master Plan Workshop, Regional Housing Authority, and the Board of Directors for Plazium. For chamber events the last few weeks, we just had two, we had a business after hours for the New Earth Market, celebrating her anniversary, and then we had a Business Connections Breakfast out at Peachtree Country Club, topic was the State of Uba City, hosted here by Mr. Steve. It was a fun time, staff was all there, we had a great time. Now for city and community events, I attended a VIP soft opening for Dunkin' Donuts. If you ever want to have some great donuts and coffee, that's a great place to go to, another one in our community. The building from that old bank pharmacy, it's just state-of-the-art now, it's very beautiful inside, they've done a lot of great work to it. Attended the Sutter Yuba, Sutter Yuba County Victims Services 27th Annual Cannonlight Vigil, and this morning we attended the Sutter Yuba County Courage Awards. This last weekend, we attended the Sutter Yuba Great Make-A-Day event by the Hacker Lab, attended the Well-A armed Women New Chapter event, and also with rededication of Williams Way, and last but not least, I attended the Sutter County Kids Fair here during Easter Week at the Veteran Center. And that's it for me, thank you.
Great, thank you. And then we have Councilmember, I believe, Cleveland.
Thank you very much. Let's see, where's the date? Okay, Thursday on the 22nd last month, attended a special mosquito vector meeting to discuss and approve a solar project that they've had, they thought they had it figured out, and some issues came up, but we got that approved. It's gonna supply, you know, the energy for that, the facility, very good price for them on it. Then on the Friday, the 23rd, was the Uba Center Chamber State of the, State of Uba City, and that was fantastic because it was like, good news all the way. We were actually one of the ones that were able to say so far, everything's just moving forward, we're trying to keep up with, as you saw tonight, two hotels that are looking, and road improvements, bridge, and many other things that are happening, just trying to keep up with it, there's so much of it, which is fantastic. On, let's see, Monday, I attended the Fracmit Feather River Air Quality Management District, and originally, the State of California was going to award on their crazy formula, about $300,000 for our community for this grant dealing with truck replacement, tractor replacement, and we went after them because their formula was skewed to only go to San Joaquin Valley, and we ended up with $3 million, which was the proper formula, and so truckers can replace their trucks and get grants for that, and then also tractor replacements. It's kind of a big difference between $300,000 and $3 million, so we were very successful for our local community on that. Let's see, today was the Courage Awards, and it's basically just encouraging the community on that, that things that happen in life, unimaginable life crisis situations, that they can make it through that, and that we have very large, giving community and supporting community to help them through, and the recipients, I mean, they went through unimaginable crisis in their life, almost every time it had to do with life and death, and then how they made it through, and then bodily damage that they made it through, and the courage that they had to make it through. Some of them, I'm just going, you know, I couldn't, I, wow, I don't know if I could have done as well as they are now, it's amazing. And then I did want to make a little comment, I didn't want to belabor the naturalization citizenship. I was part of the inaugural beginning of citizenship swearing-in ceremonies here in Sutter County, and I was the MC for approximately six of them, I think it was, for the naturalization. Of course, then you just introduce the federal government and they take off with it, and then we had the community celebration afterward. And the joy that they have on their face when they become citizens is absolutely amazing, and many of them, this bill is a slap in their face and an insult to their efforts. And almost all of them would be very angry that they did it the hard way and the right way and the just way, the American way, and then California is now allowing so many to remain illegally and being protected, and our, their tax money is being spent on protecting them, and it doesn't sit well with them. And so that's another side of the story that wasn't discussed, is that these citizens, the new naturalized citizens, just, most of them are very upset about this. And that's it.
Thank you. And ICE Mayor Harris.
I got a little over a dozen things, but I won't go down all by detail. I'll start with the highlight, which was definitely the Williams Way dedication. I tell you what, that was very profound, it was very nice to see his family face-to-face, and to have, if you guys haven't, if anyone's driven by it, highly recommend you do because it looks really sharp, and it allows us to do exactly what we plan on doing, and that's never forgetting his sacrifice. You have two law enforcement retirees sitting right here, folks like Mr. Williams, did not get a chance to do that, and instead, his name is on a wall somewhere, maybe perhaps a fountain somewhere, and now he's on a street sign. Very long respect forever for him and the sacrifice of his family, I was happy to be their part of that, and it's chief, you and your staff, outstanding job. I also attended a, Colonel Broadwell from Beale Air Force Base, our current commander, he's taking a job in Washington DC, so I attended a meeting in a private home, sending him off, and his replacement, you'll hear the name hopefully often, is Colonel Andy Clark. He's currently out there as the vice commander, so we're planning on hopefully having him here for an introduction as soon as he takes up the reins, but can you continue to attend meetings and whatnot out at Beale Air Force Base, and always impressed with the folks out there and their professionalism and their dedication and their loyalty to our community and their role they play, not only here, but throughout the world. So I'm proud to be a part of that as well. I also down here with an asterisk next to these things, the State of Uba City, our city manager did an outstanding job presenting that, was a very professional display, the items up there at the Plaza Room, it was, again, it's already been mentioned, but that was a very nice thing, and I was happy to hear everything you had to say, Steve, it was very well done. I am on the Board of Directors for Uba Center Arts by virtue of my role here in the city council, so the shameless plug for Art Wine and Wickets out in the Buttes on April 14th. I've got three tickets, I'm trying to win a, I think they said the person deliver a box of turtles, whoever sells the most tickets, I said I'd rather have a box of puppies, but you know, it's all good. Just kidding. But anyway, so that's a, that's a fun event, I will be in Washington DC with a few of my counterparts here, but also I'm able to attend, but if anyone's interested, I'd highly encourage you to get them while they're still good. And again, I can go on, but actually, I will elaborate a little bit, Hacker Lab was mentioned. Is anybody not familiar with Hacker Lab? Probably everybody not familiar with Hacker Lab, not, they're having a hard time getting the word out, but I tell you what, it is a, it's a wonderful deal, we're trying to get one here in our, in our community, there's one in, I think, Rockland and one in Sacramento, and what it is, it's a several thousand square foot facility, but they bring folks in who have 3D printers or a laser cutter, I think it could cut metal and wood and a few other things, they, or another, another tool that they have, they actually carved robotically a guitar out of wood and a few other things, and I can go on and on and on, drones and flights, and folks can go there, you pay a membership fee, you go there, if you have an idea, you can use their tools and these incredible devices and apparatus that you would never have access to, you can use that to make either a prototype of the product you want to sell, or if you have a business that's already off the ground, your membership allows you to use that to just produce your product and use their stuff while you're selling and making money. So there's a lot of different options to way to do that, to leverage the resources in that Hacker Lab, and I really hope that we can come together as a community and see one come here. It can only be a good thing, but it's not cheap, but it's something on the horizon, hopefully. I too attended, you know, the Courage Awards today and a few other things, but in interest of time, I'll continue, I would love to mention Well-A armed Women, anybody, are you guys familiar with that? So many things that are so good, this has been a while, but that was, I attended that, and that was very, very good thing, so. A, a Well-A armed Woman, so AWAW.com, just go to that website, it's pretty good. I'll stop, thank you.
Awesome.
Promise.
All right, and so just to go along with some of those, so we are preparing for the Summer at City Hall program coming up, it begins June 11th. For three weeks, we have received 56 applications from our high school students.
Awesome.
So I will be conducting interviews this Thursday as well as next Thursday, we only have seats for 30, so we'll interview and see the top 30 and get them started with the program, and you know, we'll set some students up for alternate positions just in case. Some have other obligations that can't stay in the program the entire three weeks, but we're very, very excited as the program continues to grow, so this was the largest amount of applications that we received. So the word is getting out there, and we're excited to continue to expand that, yes. And then aside from that, just going along with that education, I am on the Workforce and Education Committee, and I will be headed as well out to DC to work with that committee while we're there. And...
while we're there, and that's next week. So aside from that, I think unless there's something else, we are going to adjourn tonight. Thank you.